Welcome. Are we ready to go? I don't see it on air. We're good? There we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council regular meeting for Monday, November 7, 2022. We have two agenda or two study session items for tonight. First up is Director of Finance Jackie Lowe here to present the monthly financial report for... Is that October? September? Yeah. Good evening, Director Lowe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Want to review the September financial with you. The 2022 September General Fund financials by revenue expenditure. The September financials are also representing the quarter-end financial results. Through September 2022, the City General Fund receipts total forty-six point nine million revenue, which is eighty-two point eight percent of budgeted revenue, or four point seven million higher than the same time last year. The operating revenue year-to-day is tracking eleven point two percent higher than the same time last year. The property taxes, the city has met its budgetary goal of approximately five point two million. The sales use tax remittance total twenty-nine million are eighty-two point nine percent of fiscal budgeted revenue, which is also three point nine six combined the marijuana million higher than the same time last year, or sixteen point three percent higher than 2021. The next major line item is license and permits. The license and permits revenue is seven hundred eighty-six thousand higher than in 2022 due to a one-time building permit that was issued in 2022. The revenue budget was increased by one point time, one point two million in budget supplemental number two. We received information from the community development at the end of September. We still have three projects under review that may be issued by the end of the year. So if we complete the review for these three major projects, we will receive additional three hundred thousand. If not, the three hundred thousand will be recorded in 2023. That's a timing difference. The next line item is intergovernmental revenue. This line item was decreased by approximately two hundred one thousand because last year we received a one-time large amount from the highway user tax. And this year, we have not received that. For American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding, we receive awarded eight point seven million and receive the entire eight point seven million this year, half last year, half this year. And council previously has agreed to designate four hundred four thousand for different projects such as fifty thousand for committed for workforce training, thirty thousand for vaccines, and three hundred twenty-four thousand for homelessness. And investment earnings are negative. We have a law unrealized again, losses by four hundred twenty-nine thousand. You can see this table in your packet list, the interest earned unrealized gains, losses, and net invest earnings from 2019 to September 2022. So you can see what does the four hundred twenty-nine thousand negative amount consist of. Please note, the total revenues exclude one-time large amount such as the sale of a fire training academy and health insurance savings. Most importantly is one point one million for the football stadium refund or the sale of the proceeds. They're all excluded from this presentation. This is sales use tax revenue, the top eleven revenue sources by each categories. You can see comparing to the same time last year, we exceeded in each category. This is another way to present sales use tax revenues from 2019, 2022. You can see again, 2022 exceeds the same time in the past three years. This is a cumulative change in sales use tax collected. So this is not a sales use tax assessed, but cash collected. You can see in the past four years, we have increased the collection by eight point one million. This is the year-to-date sales use tax collection by area. You can see there are three columns, year-to-date new businesses opened, closed, and the net. Area sevens contains the businesses open and closed that are outside the city limits that include the market facilitators, which are the remote sales sellers. This is another way to show the year-to-date sales use tax collection by different areas. Then you can see the year-to-date refunds. In September 2021, we have refunded taxes approximately a hundred sixty-seven thousand. At the same time, this year's a hundred six thousand. And let's take a look at operating expenditures. We present operating expenditures by each departments. Again, we subtract one-time large expenditures from this presentation. Most of the variances are due to salaries. And also, we subtract one-time COP debt service, one point four million from the presentation. But we pay off the entire COP, two point eight million by June 2022. This is another way to present expenditures by major categories, by personnel, commodities, contractual services, capital, and debt services. The personnel line compared same time last year increased by one point six million. There are three components. One is for all the employee groups. We had a salary adjustment, three point five percent as the beginning of this year. This number actually also includes some of the mid-year salary adjustments and promotions. Also, you may recall, we signed agreements with the EEA Group and EPBA Group. We adjust these employees' salary by three point five percent as early as August 1st. So that's a reason for the major variances in the personnel line items. The contractual services, this category include items such as fire emergency services contract, software maintenance, insurance costs. The two departments have most contractual services variances are IT and public works due to timing. You can see commodity expenditure category include items such as fuel, chemicals, building supplies. Here are all increased significantly due to inflations. You can see operating surplus at the end of September 2022, four point eight million, the same time last year, two point eight million. Again, this excludes one-time. This is a slide to show the general fund transfer in and out. We transfer a hundred thirty-four thousand for capital improvement. And we also transfer three hundred ninety-six thousand for capital projects and the EDDA's loan a hundred fifty percent, a hundred fifty thousand. This is the fund composition. I want to spend a little more time to explain the details. Actual balances at the end of September, net changing fund balance, four point five million. That include one-time revenues and expenditures. Then at the end of September, our total fund balance is twenty-one point six million. Of that, one point eight million is restricted from Tabor. I want to explain, our fund balance can be restricted by funders or committed by council. Funders usually restrict the funding for either by purpose, by time, or by both. Like Tabor is a law, we have to allocate, reserve three percent revenue for emergency, but we have to pay back anything we withdraw within twelve months. It's very like a consumer credit, line of a credit. For later committed, council committed ninety-five thousand dollars from a long-term sale of a long-term assets. Then our ARPA funding restricted for projects, like I mentioned, four hundred four thousand restricted for different purposes. The federal restricted money for certain categories, council gave us directive to commit the funding for certain projects. So in the, and we have to spend down the money by 2026. In the future, if the city needs to tap into ARPA, we need to access the funding through budget supplemental budget process to transfer money from the fund balance to the revenue. But it's not the same case for a stadium district refund, the sale of Denver Bronco. You can see we, the funder restricted the funding for youth activities program, but there's no time limitation. So last year, we allocated six hundred six thousand dollars to fund 2023 budgets. And council has approved the use of funding through the budget approval process. So 2026, when we need to access the money, we don't need a budget supplemental because that has already been included in the 2023 budget process. So even you can see there are so many detail in the fund composition, but the use approval process, the timing restriction are all different. So at the end of September, we still have on-assign fund balance of approximately eight point two million. I want to give council member an economic update. At the end of September, you probably all know the Fed increased the interest by seventy-five basis points last month. So the current interest rate is between three point seventy-five percent to four percent. It won't be surprised, the Fed may increase the interest rate again by probably fifty basis points in December. So by the end of the year, our interest rate may exceed four percent. So this is the current economic situation. And also attended a conference, a webcast hosted by GFOA. I learned a term, I learned from other municipalities about their sales, sales use tax situation. And I learned a term is called COVID nineteen surprise. A lot of municipalities, they have increased sales use taxes. Some sectors hit hard, like if the municipalities focus on tourism, hospitality, travel, their sales tax are impacted negatively. But some other sectors expected to be impacted, but I actually saw increases due to remote sales, delivery commodities. So it's very interesting. A lot of municipalities see a sales tax increase through COVID. Before I conclude the, the presentation, want to take a quick poll. Per, per council request, the current financial presentation excludes one-time revenue expenditure for 2021, 2022 to compare the operating results between two fiscal years. We can understand, we want to take out any extra ordinary activities to see where our operations land. But this created some challenges because subtracting one-time transaction from the comparative financial report may skew the variance analysis between actual budgets. For example, COP, we have two payment, two point eight million, but if we subtract one-time, they actually show one point four. That will make our 2022 look better compared to the budget. So here's a solution for 2023 for you to consider. What if we don't subtract one-time from our standard financial report from the revenue expenditure and revenue expenditure line, which is a prepared one, one-page reconciliation? For example, 2022, 2021, September, our health insurance savings revenue line, expenditure line would subtract all the one-time sales, including the sales from the stadium. Also subtract all the one-time from pension contribution credits and a debt service early pay off of COP. Then you can see revenue expenditure, the net impact for 2022 is two hundred eight thousand. For 2021, we don't, we didn't have as many one-time transaction. Would this be better if we changed the 2023 financial presentation? So we don't have solve one problem, but create another confusion when we compare the actual to budget. Would you consider to make this change for 2023?
Thank you, Director Lowe. Any comments from council? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just to answer your question briefly, Director Lowe, I think the purpose of backing up those one-time things from my perspective was to understand how we're actually changing from year to year. So have we made a major expansion of ongoing expenses? Have we seen a large organic expansion or contraction of revenue? When we push one-time expenditures and revenues into the stream where they fit from an accounting perspective, from a policy perspective, it makes it difficult to follow the consequences of our actions year to year. And so that's why I, I would prefer to see them taken out on a regular basis, even though that doesn't necessarily comply with the way an accountant would do it. It makes it easier for me to see the trends going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Director Lowe, I guess I have a question. Where would you put those one-time revenues? I'm looking at the chart of the operating revenues.
You mean this?
Yes, where would those go?
Health insurance saving will probably, they are, it's very interesting. It's a good question. If we would, a current fire train is miscellaneous line item. Health insurance savings probably miscellaneous as well. The football, we would have recorded probably under Parks and Rec. The debt service is just a debt service line. So a lot of the currently miscellaneous or debt service.
So you would add it into the existing buckets, profit centers, cost centers, whatever you want to call them.
Correct.
So the way that I was kind of thinking about it, if we go back to one of the very first slides that just shows the sales and use tax, sales tax, marijuana, that kind of stuff. That, yeah, if we, I was wondering if you were going to have them down below total revenues where you show just one-time revenues below what we currently see now. But you're saying no.
We could, it just will be very busy. Like, we have three lines to show the total revenues.
Thank you, Director Lowe. Member Noonan Kemp?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and for the suggestion. And I understand the problem that you're trying to solve for, and I appreciate you bringing it to us. I agree with the Mayor Protem that for us, the longitudinal data is really helpful so we can see year over year. And I also understand that that's what you're trying to solve for in a different way. Could we keep this general fund operating revenue sheet the way it is, but then add an additional reconciliation sheet similar to what you have in the deck that just shows us what you've done here to pull out, this is what our totals are, this is what we actually have with the one-time revenue, and then this is what we have without it? Is that, I know that's an extra step for you, and I'm hesitant to create more work. Is that workable?
That would fine. We can just include that recommended page, probably just add that page to the current presentation. Because why, why, another reason we make the recommendation is, you can see the operating surplus. The four point eight million, this does not include one-time, this subtract one-time. But when you see the composition of four point five, that include one-time. So you are comparing different things throughout the whole presentation. So that's another reason, you always remember, oh, this does not include one-time, oh, this include one-time. Which way will be easier?
Thank you, Director Lowe. Member Anderson?
I, I actually like your suggestion because I think, as long as it's accompanied with an explanation, you know, as long as we can understand why the variances are there, I think that works really well. This is something that I've noticed at the Eaglewood Housing Authority meetings is when they go over the financial reports. He says this is out of line with the previous year or with budget, and it's because of this. And if we took that, you know, just as long as those big variances gets, get, get, get the explanation that, that kind of satisfies, then I think I would rather see all the money included and the comparison to the budget be more accurate personally.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Russell?
Thank you. And my question may be more for the Mayor Protem. So in taking out the one-time expenses, are we trying to track how much we actually can afford to pay for instead of when it's, when the one-time things come in, we're funding things from that? I don't know that I explained it real well, but do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
Yeah, I get it. From my perspective, it's, it's more of a, it makes it a lot easier to track operationally what the trends are. You know, the revenue we get from sales and use taxes, ongoing revenue, that's easy to track, property tax, same thing. But like the stadium money, it could confuse things. ARPA money could confuse things if it's recorded in with the general fund. It looks like we made ten million dollars less this year than we did last year because of the way the ARPA revenue came in or the timing of it. So from my perspective, it's a lot easier to analyze trends and to see how government is growing, how revenue is growing or contracting on an ongoing basis if we exclude those one-time revenue sources. It becomes confusing when we're combining the streams because it's, it's much more difficult to track the, the stream over time.
Okay, thank you. So I, I, I do agree with that, but I, but I also know that we have to reconcile everything too.
Oh, that's why we wondered if that would be a little bit easier. That's why we had an internal conversation. What's the definition of one-time? For example, the one point two million plan review fees at a one-time? No, in our definition, because that's our core business. We, we charge, we charge the plan review permit fees. And these are as a result of our non-core services or extra ordinary activities. But it might, we may not have a lot of one-time those extraordinary activities, just like 2021. But I just want to bring this to your consideration. You don't want to fix one, you're confusing other area. But this is an internal report for council make decision. So we record everything according to GAAP, but the presentation, we can change for you to make effective decisions.
I appreciate that, and I also appreciate the definitions of what a one-time thing is. Because, you know, that fits in with what the Mayor Protem said too. When, when we have more use tax reports because there's more projects, that's part of things that we need. That's not a one-time thing, just like you said. So I appreciate that.
Member Woodward?
Thank you. I'm in agreement with Joe. I think that I would like to see this addition to the, to it if, if we're making those changes. Although if, I wouldn't object to go in the way the Mayor Protem wants to do it too. I feel confident that we could do it either way. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Not sure if we provided clarity there, Director, but I, I kind of side with Mayor Protem and Member Noonan Kemp, I guess, in a sense. But I understand where Member Anderson is coming from as well, because if any member of the public were to try to go through there and line up those numbers, once they get through the general fund, like you, like you mentioned, that, those two slides, they wouldn't be able to reconcile that. So I, but I, but I'm using this data the same way that Mayor Protem is using it. So I would prefer to maybe add it as a, as a separate graph within the presentation itself.
Okay, so if I hear you correctly, we will maintain the current presentation like this, subtract each line item from each, the one-time large transaction from each line item. But we still can include this one-page reconciliation so we can double-check the numbers. Okay, so we will not make these changes for 2022, but starting January 2023, we will change, add a one slide into our presentation.
Anything else, Director Lowe?
No.
Anything else for, go ahead, Mayor Protem?
I, I do have one question, and this may be a council request, and it's related to the Area Five sales tax numbers. If you can go to that slide. Area Five is in District Four, and this is the federal and Bellevue area. This result is a little concerning to me. I just did some napkin math on the revenue loss in Area Five. And I was looking at the, the bar graph that shows that's specific to Area Five, Director Lowe, I think it's maybe prior to that slide. Yes. Uh, yeah, here. This decline in sales tax revenue, if, if my math is correct, at a three and a half percent sales taxes, a loss of something along the lines of four point five million dollars in transactions in, in that specific area. It shows, the business loss chart shows that we lost a net of seven businesses, but fifteen businesses closed with eight new ones opening. I'm wondering if we can get some more data on exactly what is occurring in Area Five. I'd, I'd potentially like to visit that area myself and find out if there's something of concern going on that we can address to try, either try to stimulate the growth in that area or perhaps fix a problem that has caused the loss of those businesses in that area.
Director Lowe, I've got that registered, and we'll have economic development work on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, Director Lowe, thank you very much for that presentation. Up next, we're talking Code Next, chapters one and two specifically. We have Director of Community Development Brad Power and Planning Manager Brian Isom here to speak to Code Next. Good evening, Mr. Isom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here to present the first of four study sessions on Code Next. Our consultant has broken it up into four different topics. Today's topic is the general provisions or the technical provisions, which consists of Chapter One, general provisions, and Chapter Two, procedures. Our staff and our consultant have been meeting with our UDC Steering Committee as well as our Technical Advisory Committee that's made up of staff members that routinely use the Development Code over the last few weeks and months. And we started to get to actual draft language of the code, which we've got presented to you all tonight. So I will send it over to Chris Brewster, our consultant with Multi Studios, and let him go through his presentation, and then we'll be able to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. Last time we talked was August. We gave you an update of where we were going, and we were getting ready to, to engage our technical committee and the steering committee, as Brian just mentioned. I guess before I get started, I have a question. Should I be running the presentation from my end, Brian, or is it going to come up on screen? There we go. Okay, great. Thank you. The next slide shows our overall schedule. And so we are proceeding at a fairly rapid pace. As you can see, we're, we're coming down to the end there in, in November where we're talking about recommended drafts and getting to a final draft. And so our plan is to hit that target where by end of December, based on feedback, we should, we as the consultant team should have a good idea of where that final draft needs to land based on your issues and concerns. That being said, we are prepared to slow down as much as we need. That will only get us to a code we think is ready for adoption. And from that point, we will try to map out an, an adoption path or strategy for you all to meet your comfort level with some of the ideas. Or if there's things that are concerns, we will take a look back at some of those topics and, and revisit them. I think we've talked about a strategy where some things might need further discussion even than that, and they wouldn't go forward for adoption at this point. But this is just the beginning of introducing those ideas to you. So over the next couple of months, we can learn where those, those issues and points are. So in our mind, we're proceeding ahead of schedule, but there's still a lot of work and discussion to be done, and we, we understand that. And we're prepared to get you all the information you need. Uh, next slide, please. So this is where we left off in August of, or, yeah, August 22nd with you all at the last work session. We were, we were in the process of engaging the committees on these four topic areas that are sort of groupings of the code and, and main topics that we've, we got from the public engagement over the spring and early summer months. The next slide shows what that means for, for you all. So that starts to map out to the chapters of the Development Code under our framework that, that Brian mentioned, chapters one and two tonight. You can see the other chapters coming at, at subsequent meetings. One of the things about this slide, it doesn't necessarily follow a, a linear way of the way we addressed them with the committee because the December 5th topic for you all is housing and neighborhood design. And one of the reasons we're flip-flopping those from, from the way the committees address them is we are beginning to coordinate a lot of those recommendations with the housing. is um, we are beginning to coordinate um, a lot of those recommendations with the housing study that Root Policy is is doing with you all, that you've been um, having work sessions on as well. And we've been meeting with um, Root and their team periodically to begin to coordinate um, Chapter Five on the housing. Um, and we're actually prepared to talk to our our steering committee tomorrow night on on a lot of those topics. So that's why that topic is flip-flopping and not coming linearly for you all. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is a view of the the overall framework we landed on early on in the project when we were um, first figuring out how the Code Next project should reorganize your current development standards. And there's really not that much that's changing in terms of the overall um, structure of the code. There's a few things that we think are better organized in different places, but this was the structure we landed on fairly early in the process. Um, and the next slide shows um, how that ties with some of these these four main topics. So again, um, tonight is Chapters One and Two, to to be honest, with the fairly boring and and routine things, but also very important. So we want to make sure we get your, any any questions you may have on on these these topics asked. Essentially, this is the operating system of the code. It's going to make all the other things work, and we hope work better um, for you all as decision-making tool. Um, but these were again, talked with the steering committee and technical committee in in July and August. And um, what's in your pocket is the the response to some of those comments. Uh, next slide. Uh, so coming out of the the steering committee uh, and technical committee discussions, we had a a few key themes that we wanted to address or were in the process of addressing um, with that draft. Um, the first was mainly from from the staff and technical committee level is we needed to try to clarify a lot of the the pre-application procedures. There were a lot of things in the the code that were um, codified that didn't need to be. Um, and there were things that were um, putting in in step-post decision processes that were trying, almost to do too much, things that were staff normally did routinely, and the code would have to have a very long, complicated section. Um, many, many of the committee members thought, well, that's not necessary to to codify some of those things. So um, cleaning up a lot of those administrative procedures was a lot of the 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 response we got from the technical committee. Um, overall, we wanted to, um, there's, there's things in the code that were um, not necessary. Um, annexation, um, amending the comprehensive plan. Um, we view it as you you have those uh, procedures and authority by statute, so it didn't make sense to codify those in the Development Code. Um, also, some of them, like annexation, you're not going to encounter very often. So um, for your community, it's not necessarily a really important part of the development process. And so to the extent you do ever encounter it, you you always have to follow statutory procedures anyway. So the thought was to remove that and make the procedures truly development applications and not some of these larger planning and policy issues in the Development Code. The other um, thing we wanted to do was distinguish better with how decisions were made. So a little more clarity on um, which applications were um, administrative, going just to staff or staff and planning commission review, um, and which ones elevate all the way up to you all as the legislative group. So hopefully, some of the tables clarify that. You have a current table in your code that I'm going to talk to in a moment, um, and I'll explain the differences between that. Um, and then overall, just aligning things with the 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 recent policy decisions of your plan. So that was a lot of the charge coming out of both committees for these technical provisions. Uh, next slide. Uh, so for Chapter One, um, I should back up also a minute. We, one of the things we are trying to do is to provide um, people reviewing the code, including uh, planning commission and and council, um, as much information as they want and as little as they need. So one of the documents we've provided is the section map. It's a little bit of a inside look at some of our internal notes. So some of the comments are written and and maybe a little bit of shorthand. But what we're trying to do is to lead you to from um, the sections of the new code, where those same or similar provisions could have been found in the current code and what changes we've made. So um, that section map is is the intermediate level of information. If you want to dive further, one of my recommendations would be to to peruse that and and see if there's any issues that are really important to you or any of the comments that raise questions or concerns that that can help you look a little bit further. But we understand that 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 tool doesn't necessarily answer all your questions. Um, we use it mainly as a check on ourselves, to make sure we're not losing things from your current code that are important, and also to to point to when we are adding things into the code that are different. We want to make sure that's very clear as well. So um, all of these drafts will be coming to you in in that format, a an overall summary. Uh, the section maps are sort of the the bridge of the internal notes. And then um, if you do choose to review the the entire code and and go through it, um, we want you to be able to do that as well. Um, so with that, the, some of the key changes in in one, again, this is um, a fairly technical and administrative chapter. It's it's all of the legal prerequisites and and things like that that are in the code. So there wasn't very many big changes, other than trying to organize and clarify some language. Um, we did um, update the purpose sections to be more relevant to the to the Inglewood Forward Comprehensive Plan that was done in two thousand sixteen and some of the other sub-plans for that. Um, some so so minor changes there. Um, but with that, we are very much trying to set up a hierarchy of guiding language in this code. One of the things we hear on every code project, and we certainly heard it from um, stakeholders in this one, was um, we want flexibility. We want to be able to to not be so rigid in our development code that we can't entertain um, interesting things, new things, things that don't meet the letter of the law or things that are um, not anticipated. So flexibility in the code is one thing we always hear. Our way of doing that is we want to be very clear of what some of the standards are trying to achieve. So we're doing that with a hierarchy of this guiding language. The purposes being uh, broad, citywide policies tying to your comprehensive plan. Intent, when we get to other sections, chapters, zoning districts, we'll have an intent. Um, what are we trying to achieve in this zoning district? Landscape standards will have an intent. What are we trying to achieve with landscape standards? And then when we get down to the actual substantive standards themselves, we'll have design objectives. What what's the, what are the outcomes or physical results that we want? So we can continually gauge whether the code is working against those. And then if there is an appeal or some type of relief or some flexibility, that um, those elements do guide the decisions. And I'll speak for a little bit, um, a little bit later in in this presentation to emphasize that point again. Uh, one of the other, the the bigger changes I do want to point out that that does land in Chapter One is the non-conforming section. Um, three main changes there. One of the things you have in your current code is that all non-conforming lots need to go to the planning commission to be uh, certified before they can be built. Um, I, we, we talked with staff on on some of the different reasons for that. And what we as the consultant team are landing on is is that's probably not necessary. Um, essentially, what we're saying is that if a lot was legally created and doesn't conform to the zoning ordinance, that means a change happened somewhere down the line. And so they are by by law and by practicality, they're always, you're always eligible to build on those types of properties. And so our thought is we don't need to send someone through a process to get that approved. Um, that that if they are able to demonstrate, on, you know, they have the burden of proof of showing that that lot was legally created, and then that lot can be used um, subject to all the the other development standards. So it might have some constraints on it if if it's not meeting the standards for whatever reason. But there wouldn't necessarily be a a process to um, approve that lot, since it's already been legally created. Um, from what we learned when discussions with staff, is that stemmed from some of the the concerns on building on the existing smaller lots. And so since under the housing um, issues that will be coming before you in December, we're recommending going back to allowing some of the smaller lots anyway. Some of those lots may not necessarily be non-conforming anymore. And so it made sense to at least treat that as you would any other non-conforming situation and not require a process. Uh, another change that we are recommending, and this one comes out of um, some of the input in the public engagement and some of the discussions with the steering committee, was the idea of offering some limited expansions of of non-conforming situations. Uh, you already had two in your current code right now, and so those are captured in that that section, and the section map identifies those. And those were for um, expanding existing buildings that didn't conform to setbacks. You had a limited expansion where you can build a certain distance along that already um, established setback line. Or you can do that to conform with other setback patterns in in the area. So that's in your code right now. Um, so the third one we suggested adding was to um, allow limited expansions of non-conforming buildings. If there, if what they could otherwise build under the district standards could possibly be of a lesser impact. So this is a situation where um, we are aware of some um, multi-unit buildings that are legally non-conforming, that are rather small and neighborhood-friendly and 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 could use some reinvestment. But to do that, then they're a non-conforming building and lot, they're they're not able to expand because your code is suggesting to, that you should get rid of those over time. Um, based on the idea of allowing some limited expansions and based on the idea that there's some flexibility in this code, um, one of the the things that was discussed was, well, if that expansion is a lesser impact than what would otherwise be built according to the code, um, why wouldn't we let it continue um, if it can be something that's that's of a lesser impact? So um, that particular section, if you're concerned about that issue, you can, you can pay attention to that, the the section that's noted there in the draft. And then in response to that, we put some additional criteria on those limited expansions of non-conformities um, in general. Um, the last one related to that is the current um, current process requires you to register um, non-conformings or certify them. Um, so we're recommending that 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 not be the case. Most cases, it's more on a ad hoc or as-encountered basis. It's not um, sort of that use it or lose it situation that any time an an applicant realizes that that their lot or building is non-conforming for some reason. Um, and and they can prove that it was legally created before it became non-conforming. Um, they should be entitled to these, rather than forcing them to have to certify um, before a certain time before they were allowed to use that. I'll, I, I, please stop me at any time, but I guess I will continue through Chapter Two as well. Can, it's, it's not a very long presentation. And then um, see if there's any comments or questions from you unless unless anyone stops me in the interim. So um, the next slide has some of the highlights of Chapter Two. So um, here, one of the the biggest change is trying to um, reorganize and simplify a lot of your procedures. It's pretty evident, and it's and it's actually quite normal that over time, different things get added and and the procedures begin to come a little um, disjointed, and and there's things that are in there in duplicate. There's things that apply to all procedures that are repeated over and over, and the code becomes less user-friendly. Um, so believe it or not, um, the current procedure or the draft procedures that are in your packet are are attempt to be um, a little more user-friendly. Uh, one of the ways of doing that is to take all of the things that are common to all procedures or or all the things that any one procedure could possibly have. Um, pre-application steps, notice requirements, what type of meeting, how are decisions made? Um, to put that all in one section, so that you don't have to repeat it over and over for each each uh, procedure. And then use the procedures table to activate which elements of that procedure um, apply to which specific application. Um, so an easy way to think of that are the notice requirements. Um, you have text and regulations for whether it's published notice, mailed notice, or posted notice. And those repeat for every application. So we put them in there once, and then on the, in the table and in the application procedures themselves, we explain whether each application requires posted notice or mailed notice. So um, that's one overarching organizational change that we're trying to to implement. You had that to some extent, but it was just coming over time. You could see it was um, becoming less and less clear. Um, the second bigger change was um, to now for each of the different applications, we wanted those to follow a a fairly common pattern. So you'll see in each of those that there's, there, most of them follow the same four subsections. Applicability, when does the application apply? What types of activity makes this particular application um, applicable? Which, when do I have to submit an application under that? Um, so things like um, you know, if you're plating property, if you're changing boundaries, you're going to have to plat. Um, if you're changing easements, there will be some type of plating document. If you're building a new building, we need a a a site improvement plan. If you're changing your use, you may or may not need a zone change application. And so those um, cri, the applicability statements are are the first thing. Uh, the second is the criteria. How will that decision be viewed? Um, so each each of them has anywhere from uh, four or five to seven or eight things that are trying to set the expectation for both the applicants um, and for you all as decision-makers of what types of topics you should be looking at and whether this application meets the standards or not. Then some specific procedures unique to that application, and then lastly, the effective decision. Um, once the decision is rendered, am I able to go right to permits? Um, do I have another step? Um, what's my appeal process if I don't like the application result? Um, so those, all of the applications did follow that, but they might, that each of the individual sections might be unique to each application. One of the other, related to that, one of the other changes we did do is there were, as I mentioned, in the overall input from the technical committee and steering committee, there were a lot of things in there that were more administrative. Um, so you, so you had several different um, permit applications, all of which were just staff review applications, and they were in the code. And so we tried to consolidate those wherever we could, so that there weren't um, just a a a large number of things that were more routine and but didn't necessarily trigger a public process that were more getting your application to permit. And so we think we streamlined those to make the code a little bit user-friendly. But they don't necessarily, that doesn't mean they're not there. There, you, you still need to go get a building permit, or you still need to go get a grading permit, um, depending on how much activity your application is is creating after the approval.
Mr. Brewster, real quick.
Yes.
Um, we're going to try to start this uh, meeting at about seven o'clock. Can you wrap up the next few bullets?
I sure can. Yeah, and what? Um, we'll just jump to the next slide, and I'll I'll cover those in in the next two or three slides, because I'm going to hit on um, the, really not much has changed from this table, other than the consolidation I mentioned. It's a little bit simpler than the table you have in the current code. Um, I want to highlight three particular ones um, for you to take a look at if you're concerned. The first is um, the the plating, major subdivision and minor subdivision. Um, it's currently listed in there as um, preliminary plat, final plat, and then there's some recording. Um, in talking with staff, you very rarely go, your plating issues as a built-out community are fairly routine. So when you're doing a major subdivision plat, those are usually combined anyway. So we've gone ahead and consolidated those, and then gave the applicant the option to break out into a preliminary and final if they wanted to. But the code is set up to think of that as one particular application. And then on the minor subdivisions, those are things that are more administratively approved. We've grouped them under, all under one heading. So it might be um, a lot consolidation, a lot line adjustment, things that are meeting the code but are just more technical and cleanup of lots, and so those are in one process as well. Uh, the next one to highlight on this slide is um, the the specific plan. I'm going to talk about that in 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 a couple more slides. That's a new procedure that was added in. And it gained some new relevance to us, based on some of the substantive standards that are going to be coming in at subsequent meetings. And I'll explain that on the next slide when I get to it. And then the last one is the administrative adjustments. That's the one that's, it's in your code right now, but that is the one where we plan to be routing all of the the flexibility elements that we talked about early on um, through that process. And so we have some some specific criteria and conditions for that, that we think can improve the code and make it a good decision-making tool. Uh, so the next slide. This is a kind of a conceptual um, diagram that we used early on in the process, and I think with you all as well on on how we try to get to um, a code that's flexible but also adds certainty. And we think this is an especially important when we're we're starting to talk about design standards, some of those things that um, are a little harder to pin down from for the perfect standard. Um, so we still try to do that. So the standard is there in the middle in the red. But all of those intent statements and things we um, I talked about, lead up to how that standard applies. And then that gives you better decision-making criteria on the backend, so it's not just as black and white. But we think the code can operate in those shades of gray and still be a good decision-making tool and still meet all the legal prerequisites. So next slide. Uh, so this is an example of that in the administrative adjustment section. So every one of the standards there that's in the middle ought to have intent statements and the design objectives going in. It tells you what you're trying to achieve. It may have some context criteria. The steering committee's talked a lot about different standards for different contexts. So it may have some different statements on where and what situations the standard applies, and then you apply the standard. If you're not getting the result you want, an applicant could be able to say, well, um, I'm going to look, the standards also have some design strategies following that that give them options. So you may have one or two different ways to meet the standard. And then lastly, there's the uh, the opportunity for exceptions or administrative adjustments, and those would all again, circle back to the intent statement. So that kind of repetitive decision-making process tracks through all of the applications. Next slide.
Next slide. So this is just a quick overview of things that are to come. This is a bit of a teaser. So although the administrative adjustment section is in the procedure section that you have before you, these are all the sections that are capitalizing on that and could have options or opportunity for flexibility through the actual review processes. Next slide. And then lastly, the specific plan I mentioned, this is a recent amendment. It was done mainly for your downtown area and for an ability to do a specific code based on a plan. We were reviewing that section similar to the way we do PUDs. And one of the questions that came up on the right side of the screen are a lot of the substantive standards that are coming in different, in the chapters that are coming in the coming weeks for you all. And we, again, we have options and types and things to apply. And one of the questions we've got was, well, why couldn't we just go and set this, some of these standards for a particular area? And the answer is fantastic. You can and you should, and that's the process you had already been setting up in your specific plan process. So doing a development code based on a detailed and involved planning exercise is a great thing. We just don't want those codes to be completely separate from this code. So we would expect those to start, they can start using some of the design strategies and types we are building into the substantive standards of the code. And they can adjust them based on these specific plans. And so that's one of the things that we think is an easy and natural fit for something that's already in the code and we think we're improving on. And this will somewhat relate to your PUD process because essentially what the PUD process is, is a smaller planned version of that. So there is a placeholder in the procedure section now because we're kind of waiting to see where all of the other things land before we circle back to amend your PUD process. So that'll conclude my quick overview and hopefully I've left enough time for questions or enough as you want.
Mr. Brewster, thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions from council? Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. So on the non-conformities and Mr. Brewster, I was happy to hear that you were trying to, trying to make that a little simpler or easier to maintain those non-conformities. But as I was reading the language in the draft here, under the intent section, it says, "The city's intent to bring as many aspects of these non-conformities into compliance with current regulation as reasonably practical." Maybe not as strongly against it as it was before, but you know, then in section D, rehabilitation or expansion of the structure that increases the degree of non-conformities is prohibited. There's, in the root policy research presentation, they talked about the importance of preserving affordable housing. And I'm thinking about, you know, walking around neighborhoods, I see, you know, these fourplexes, duplexes, triplexes that have been there for many, many years. And I want to have the attitude that we want to roll out the red carpet for these, this existing, already existing affordable market, affordable housing, it's been there for years and years and years, and go even further than allowing it and saying, we want, you know, we want more of this or we want to, I would like to see, you know, non-conforming, multi-unit things that are in R1 treated with the same freedoms that a duplex would have in R2, for example. And I don't know how to get there in the code or if there's, you know, maybe it's not in the non-conformity section, another section, but to treat these existing non-conformities that are actual affordable housing as something we want to actively preserve and not just, not just try to bring them into it, but still allow them to exist, but take a really positive approach towards them. Is there a way to do that in the code or is this something, you know, council has an appetite for? I don't know.
Yeah, I'll give my quick answer. There is. I would like to learn more about the extent of those because I think we thought we were headed in that direction. And I think a lot of the things that we thought were non-conforming or those building types you're mentioning, if they weren't, you mentioned the R1 district, so no to there. But if they're in existing areas that are already single-family, there's a good possibility that we're allowing more of them because you have a lot of areas that are single-family homes but are already zoned for those two, three, and four buildings. So we're trying to get more of those into the districts to begin with, but maybe not necessarily R1. The one example we did become aware of was in an R1 where a duplex wasn't allowed. So we're trying to allow those. The second answer is we could become more lenient on, I think the criteria might work for that because what we're trying to say is those buildings are often very small-scale and neighborhood-friendly. And what someone's likely to build back, even if it conforms, is not going to be that as much. So we're trying to, that criteria that we added in for that duplex may work for some of those other non-conforming situations. The third thing I would say is if we need to add a criteria that's specifically towards, not necessarily just keeping the scale and character of the building, but keeping a contributing affordable housing type, that might be something else that we could add into that criteria to get you to the level of flexibility that is the appetite and consensus of the council.
I do, I think there are a lot of these in R1 areas. I don't know how you'd go about counting them, but I walk, you know, walk around in the city a lot. And I did, I just saw one the other day that was, it was definitely in an R1, I think R1C. And it was a quadplex. It was a brick building with two up, two down. And it was just a cool old building that, you know, I would love to see. I would hate it if a developer came in and tore that thing down and built a monstrous, single-family home, you know? And that's happened, that's happened in places. So that's specifically what I'm talking about is how do we preserve and even, you know, not particularly encourage new ones, but allow for the continuation and modification, expansion of those that are already existing.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Russell?
Thank you. I would like to address the issue of non-conforming lots also from a different perspective. I think that we need to be careful. When I first got on council about seven years ago, I don't know, 250 single lots just came on the market. And they were building two-story, 1,600 square foot houses on a single lot that impeded the sun and the setbacks were very small. I just want to make sure that we are protecting the solar spot in neighborhoods. And has the committee addressed that also?
Yes, not specifically on non-conforming lots. We are looking at it on the smaller lots. So as I mentioned, any non-conforming lot is still going to meet all of the development standards. So they'll have to meet setbacks and the bulk plane standards and all of those. And to the extent their non-conforming lot created constraints in meeting that, they're going to have to go through the variance process under the code. So that would be my first thing to make sure that we, if we have misunderstood the extent of non-conforming lots, we can take a look back at it, but we think we have your concern addressed through that. And then the committee is also looking at what different things to do with the bulk plane. In fact, that's one of our topics tomorrow. Things that we can make sure that the height limits and the massing of the buildings and lots is done in a way that's balancing sort of the existing, the issues, right? I think right now what's going on, people are just maxing out whatever's in that bulk plane. And we're looking at ways to say, how can we accomplish both? Get a reasonable building, massing and footprint and preserve more light and solar access for portions of the lot. We don't have the, we haven't even presented our concept to the committee yet, but we will tomorrow night. And so that'll be coming before you as well. But to your broader question is, any of those non-conforming lots are going to need to meet those standards, regardless of the generally applicable standards.
Okay, and so non-conforming lots, are they different than just small lots or single lots?
It will depend on what's making them non-conforming, but typically they are just smaller lots. They're a lot that doesn't meet either a width or a size standard. But if they're going to be developed, they still need to meet all the setbacks. So essentially what they would have is a reduced buildable area because of their legal non-conforming status. So they would have to be as far back from the property line as any other lot would, unless that non-conforming situation caused them to be constrained to the point where they go ask for a variance. But then they're in, our thought was they're in a discretionary development process at that point. But if they could otherwise meet the standards, maybe they don't need to register and get approval.
All right, thank you very much for that.
Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm cognizant of the time, so I'll be brief. But I just wanted to plus one, Member Anderson's recommendation and desire to see the existing non-conforming affordable units that we have in the city preserved and protected. I would also like to see that. And then my next question is, can you give us some context? Where does this modifications, modernization of our code place Inglewood regionally? When we compare ourselves to our regional neighbors, how user-friendly, as you said, is our code for perhaps interests that want to build affordable housing? How do we relate to our neighbors?
That's a little bit tough for me to answer, other than we do feel like we do a pretty good job of making codes more user-friendly and understandable and we get pretty good feedback. A lot of your neighbors are doing the same exercise and have been. So I think everyone's kind of in the same boat of trying to upgrade and improve the codes for usability and modern issues. So it just depends on whether the communities had the time and resources to do that. And I know a lot of your neighbors have or are. To the second part of how user-friendly it is for affordability, I think that part's coming. When we get to chapter five with you on December 5th, we're still coordinating with Root and we do think we have some pretty interesting and exciting ideas from the developer stakeholders and from our committee that we'll be able to present to you. It's a really, really tough challenge and we want to make sure that the code isn't the barrier, but we also want to make sure that any development that happens reflects the scale and character that Inglewood desires. And I think we're getting pretty close to that. That's more of a substantive issue than a user-friendly issue, but more to come.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Just one quick comment in regards to the section one changes. I noticed here in paragraph D, which is page 52 of the packet, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals is codified in this section of code. I'm a little concerned doing it this way. There are some specific prescribed procedures for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, but the authority for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals is actually in the city's charter. Charter paragraph 59 and 60, create the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And paragraph 60 prescribes powers and duties of that board. Additionally, we have a section of the Inglewood Municipal Code which is dedicated to our boards and commissions. And that location, if we are changing the authority makeup or prescriptions for the behavior of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, seems like a better location to make those changes. I don't want to put code here about a board and there about a board and everywhere about a board. I'd like our residents and citizens be able to find information on this board in the same place where they go to find information on all the other boards and commissions in the city.
Yeah, that's, thank you for that point and we'll definitely clarify that with the city attorney. One of the reasons we put them in there is, totally understand your point. The board though is one of the unique, it's the only one that, it only exists by virtue of your development code. So that's why you often see some of their more establishment things in the development code, whereas you don't for the other boards and commissions because they have other duties or roles outside of the development code. But your point that it's already established there, we'll go back and look at that and get with the city attorney and make sure it's as simple and as cleared up as possible on that. So thank you.
Thank you, and I do want to clarify, that board is established in our charter, not just in our development code, but actually in the city's charter it was created.
Right, but their only reason for existence is to give, to operate under the development code. But yes, I understand.
Member Russell?
Thank you, and I just want to, I do agree with the Mayor Protem. When I was reading that section, I had the question where that came from because I do think, even if it's going to be in here, I think it has to agree totally with what the charter says and not conflict in any way. So thank you.
Yes.
Any other, Member Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple more comments on chapter two. Going through the table you have at the beginning and then the different sections on the different processes that an applicant would have to go through, I didn't see it spelled out clearly, like for example, a text amendment on how that process would work. And it's quite, it seemed to me quite clear in the old code of how, if there was a text amendment that it would go through PNZ, come back to council. I don't know if that's kind of implied or if I missed it in some of the, I know you're trying to clarify and consolidate, but I didn't actually see the process anywhere. I don't know if I missed it or if it's, is it in there somewhere?
It should be in there in, I'm opening my draft now so I get the right subsection. Yeah, so the text amendment should be 1622. So there's a procedure subsection. It might be much smaller than you're used to seeing. The reason for that is because we put all of the things that applications go through. In other words, when it gets to planning commission, what can they do? That's the same with every application, so that's in the general procedure. So there is a little bit of, we've lost a little bit of the user-friendliness of, I want to find everything I want about this one issue right here versus in favor of overall organization. And so which one's right or wrong, I'm not necessarily sure, but we can go back and take a look at that. But I would look, just direct you to 1622 and then comparing that to the table and the general procedure and see if that answers your question. And if...
I don't think it, I mean, I went through the general section and I didn't quite see, the process didn't jump out at me. I'm not saying it's not in there, saying it didn't. And I feel like that is important enough that, and that same process I know applies to many different things. So it seems like something that should jump out. Maybe if you point me, you know, in the general section, then I'll understand it a little better. But, and then the other thing in chapter two that I, you know, I want to kind of express my opinion on is, I see the PUD has not, the PUD process has not been completed yet, but you do have some, the site improvement, or the, sorry, the, what am I thinking? Specific plan area, any of these rezonings. And then there's a maximum, a minimum size of 3,000, 37,500 square feet for these rezonings. I don't know if that, how big the PUD, maybe a PUD is smaller than that. But I would like to see something that makes it possible for smaller developers to do smaller projects using these processes or an alternative process to, you know, to where we can enable more kind of neighborhood by neighborhood rezonings that would allow for some of that more small-scale development as well. And I don't really see a space for that in here currently.
Yeah, that's a great point. One, it's, the PUD would be where we're doing that. One of the things we're working on is oftentimes PUDs have minimum requirements because they're supposed to be based on a bigger plan or a bigger idea. So we're trying to wait to see with all of the flexibility through the site improvement plan, how much are we going to now need to be resorting to PUDs? And does that number need to be dialed down so that it can do what you're suggesting? Or have we already accomplished what you're suggesting through the other procedures? In which case we could dial up the PUD to be more of that in-between, between your larger specific plans and a typical zoning district. So we're trying to strike that balance.
And this, I guess this would be another way to deal with the non-conformities as a possibility. I don't see why, if a big developer can come in and do a large development and get, you know, go through the rezoning process, why can't we make it easy for a non-conforming lot to come in and just rezone that lot for duplex and write it into the code that if, you know, you can come and rezone your lot if it already has a non-conformity that allows for multi-families and just rezone it and then they get, you know? I know we like to think of zoning spanning large areas, but we don't apply that same standard when it comes to PUDs. So we're, in my view, we're kind of favoring large developers rather than somebody who just wants to maintain the affordable housing they already have. So I'll leave it at that because I know we're getting past time.
Thank you, man. It is an important topic, so I don't mind giving you more time if there's any other items that you want to cover.
Oh, yeah. I think I could go on for another 45 minutes and I probably shouldn't.
Well, we till next week then.
Thank you.
So, Member Russell, go ahead.
Can I just, this comment deals with PUDs also because I know in the past, one thing I think that we should be careful of in allowing PUDs is blockbusting. Because you could have an R1 area that has no duplexes at all. And I think we've talked about this in the past. And I, I think, we've talked about this in the past, that I think Littleton, you have to have three or four acres before you can even talk about a planned unit development. So I just think we need to be careful in protecting neighborhoods and not blockbusting where somebody that's lived there for a long time would lose their property, or, um, anyway, I think we just need to be careful of that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
I just wanted to suggest, Mayor, for next week's agenda, perhaps we revisit the topics that we talked about tonight, since we clearly have some unfinished business, before we move on to the next.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Member Anderson?
Oh, well, I forgot to turn up, but I do want to make one more comment. I think, I'm thinking through, looking ahead at these next, the topics coming up, and I don't know if we can, you know, like, the housing and, um, one, I feel, I feel like we're going to need more time than, than we gave, we were able to give to it tonight for some of those later topics, so just have that on your radar as you're planning the agendas.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Anyone else? If not, Mr. Brewster, I do want to, going back to the original comment about nonconformity, I echo Member Anderson and, and, uh, Member Noonan Camp when they spoke in favor of it. I think it's purposely vague in the draft. Um, I think you said that you wanted to provide a little bit more, um, well, I, I, I think it's, we'll probably discuss this next week as well, but I just want to make sure that we cover that nonconformity topic, because I do think it's an important one. But with that, Mr. Brewster, Mr. Isom, thank you very much for the presentation tonight. Mr. Isom, is there anything else you want to say before? Nope. All right, that'll work. Mr. Brewster, we'll probably see you next week.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sorry for the lateness in that conversation, but now I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as law.
City Clerk, if you're able to do so, or could you take roll call, sorry?
I'll try. Member Anderson?
Present.
Member Noonan Camp?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Present.
Member Wink? Member Woodward?
Present.
Mayor Sierra?
Present.
Six present, one absent, the absent one being Member Wink.
Thank you, and Member Wink did let me know that she was going to be out tonight. Moving on to considerations, the minutes from the meeting on October seventeenth. Any changes? Member Russell.
I noticed on page ten, eleven C-three and eleven C, I might have done that wrong, eleven C-four, I think. Hang on just a second, I'll go to page ten.
Sure.
Yes. Eleven C-three and eleven C-four. On eleven C-three, I voted no. That was the contract for cross purposes. And then eleven C-four was the resolution in, of support in favor of sales tax ballot initiatives. I believe, I know I voted no. I also believe that Mayor Protem Ward voted no on that.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any other changes to that text? City Clerk, did you got those changes?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Any other changes to the text? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the draft minutes from October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Member Russell. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
With the record show, six ayes.
Thank you, City Clerk. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, we have recognition of code enforcement for national awards. I believe we have Deputy Chief Bender up tonight.
While he's making his way up, Mayor, may I?
Yes, uh, City Manager, go ahead.
And hopefully I don't steal Deputy Chief's thunder. But just want to express on behalf of the entire city staff, our, the, our pride, yes, pride, in the Code Division for their two awards that Vance will get into. We have just been over the moon about the American Association of Code Enforcement. Really, these are the, this is the cream of the crop throughout the country. It's a national organization. There are only seven awards, I believe, that are given each year, and Inglewood came home with the gold in two, and so, just so proud of the work that they do, and led by Supervisor Lewis, and turn it over to Vance.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Members Council, uh, thank you for having us tonight. First off, I just want to tell you how incredibly proud I am to be standing here representing Chief Watson and the Police Department tonight, uh, and appreciating our code enforcement team. Dave Lewis was in Atlanta for the American Association of Code Enforcement Conference last month and was there as they received the award for the Department of the Year Award for the entire nation, uh, for our code enforcement team. These team members, uh, worked incredibly hard and have done just an amazing job for our community. It goes hand-in-hand with the other award that we received this year, which was, uh, David Lewis received the Excellence in Leadership Award for the entire nation as well. And I think that, uh, under Dave's leadership, um, our code team has just been incredibly, just, he's increased our legitimacy, he's increased professionalism, and, uh, and has just done an amazing job as the forward-facing face for our code enforcement team. And I just wanted to, uh, to say that that's what makes us stand out. It's just very unique at the way that we have our code enforcement division in the Police Department and the way that they work with the other city departments, and I think it's just amazing, so thank you very much. David, would you like to say a couple of words?
So this, Dave Lewis Codes Division Manager, so this was a peer-driven award process, and we were evaluated over the last five years, uh, the accomplishments that we've made here in, uh, the Code Enforcement Division. And I really want to attribute that primarily to the way that we manage relationships and partnerships. Just like many of us, we have significant others, and it takes a significant amount of negotiation, communication, ongoing adjustments, uh, in our relationships. And we have over thirty thousand residents that we have to maintain resi, uh, relationships with, along with partnerships with a variety of different, uh, city organizations. We're the forward-facing part of code enforcement, but code enforcement goes, as you all know, you've seen the Code Next, goes to community development, it goes to our city attorney's office, our city manager's office, the fire marshal's office, licensing, the city clerk's office, and to all of you. And the processes and the advancements that we've made, enhancements to our training, enhancements to our officer safety, our ability to be more proactive in the work that we do, where we've gone from being in our low twenties in proactive work in the last five years to over sixty-nine percent of our calls for service are proactive officer-initiated calls. We've added great technology that allows us to stay in the field, and we have a great team of professionals who are, are dedicated to this work. As you all know, uh, code enforcement can be very difficult. Enforcement in general is not met with always the kindest, uh, the kindest words, and at times can be conflicting. But I think we manage that with a lot of education, um, long-term goals, and I think that, uh, this team has made a significant increase into the quality of life here in Inglewood. So I really wanted to thank you and all of our community partners. One thing that did stand out when we did receive these awards is, um, the community's support. The President of the American Association of Code Enforcement said this was the first time that they received overwhelming, uh, letters of support from community organizations and from citizens, to include former and current code enforcement advisory committee members, our partners at the shelter, our partners with Tri-County Health, soon-to-be Arapaho County Health, Park Ranger Association, the American Associate, uh, the Colorado Association of Animal Welfare, as well as the original nominating body. We did the final presentation, but the Colorado Association of Code Enforcement recommended us to represent the state in this recognition. So I'm tremendously proud of the work that we've done, and I really look forward to where we go here in the next five years, so thank you for your support.
We would like to take a photo. If everyone can come up front, and we'll have the mayor and deputy chief, if you can join them.
Manager Lewis, I'll say a few words as well. This isn't the first time that you or your team have come in front of us. There always seems to be some type of recognition, or the fact that you are spreading your knowledge across other municipalities for, you know, your expertise. So I want to also thank you for, for making Inglewood proud, because there's a lot of work that you guys are doing here in the city that you guys are being recognized for, and obviously I'm very proud to see you guys get this award as well at the national level, so thank you. I'm not sure if there's anyone else on council that would like to say anything, but thank you very much, Ma- Manager Lewis, and to the entire code enforcement team. Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to Agenda Item Seven, which is recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by five p.m. prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address city council. There's an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. Please limit your presentation to five minutes, and written materials for presentation to council may be submitted to the city clerk. We do have three speakers tonight. Do we have, uh, Marsha McGilly here from, um, the Aurora South Metro Small Business Development Center?
She is online.
She is online? Ms. McGilly, uh, see if you were able to.
I'm here.
There you are. Ms. McGilly, you have five minutes if you're able to state your name and your address or cross streets.
Will do. My name is Marsha McGilly, and my, where I am seated now, the cross streets would be Dayton, or the office, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. Go ahead, Ms. McGilly.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council for your time this evening. Again, my name is Marsha McGilly, and I am the Executive Director of the Aurora South Metro Small Business Development Center. Annually, I come to you with the highlights of our strategic partnership, and later in the meeting tonight, you will be considering our next IGA for ongoing relationship. We've had a very successful and productive strategic partnership in place since twenty-sixteen. Besides our free and confidential one-on-one consulting, our business education webinars, and our resource referrals, we've added some new services for the next IGA period. In the next three years, we, um, would like to do, and I'm going to hit the highlights, the, all of it is in the report that was, um, submitted to council, in your council report. We'll add a lenders forum for the bankers with the SBA. The bankers, the local bankers have asked for the Small Business Administration to come and do a lending panel and giving them instruction on how to work with the SBA on those loans. There are quite a few new lenders that want to have, ask questions answered. We will arrange that with the chamber as well. We'll hold, uh, we'll conduct an annual survey of business owners in Inglewood proper and bring back some great small business, uh, information and data to you. We will, I can, I will continue to meet with the Economic Development Team monthly. We discuss, um, participating businesses and SBDC services, their needs, and how our consulting and training assist those that are starting businesses, as well as those wanting to grow their businesses to the next level. We do assist the Inglewood grant participants on the initiation and acceleration grants, and we will continue to do that. And we intend to partner more closely with the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce and the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority regarding marketing, the efforts that they're doing, and the activities that we might develop or do together. I wanted to share just a few, uh, economic impact highlights from the twenty-twenty-one, our pandemic two-year period. Wanted to let you know that we had two to three times the number of citizens come to us for services during that period. So the number of citizens we assisted in that two-year period was two-hundred-and-sixty-four. The consulting session hours were nine-hundred hours. That's a lot of hours in a two-year period. Just so you know, a couple other, uh, two other numbers, the jobs created during that time were thirty-five, and the jobs retained during that pandemic period were sixty-three. The rest of the economic impact, uh, details are in the packet that I sent to you, and I'm finished with my remarks, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to address them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGilly. Any questions from council? Seeing now, Ms. McGilly, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, moving on to Ms. Kelly McCloskey, here to address counsel regarding Inglewood Police Victims Advocate. Good evening, Ms. McCloskey. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Good evening. My name is Kelly McCloskey. My cross streets are Eladia and Radcliffe.
Go ahead, Ms. McCloskey.
Thank you, guys, for letting me speak here tonight. As many of you know, on September twenty-eighth, our community lost a beautiful soul. My name, my neighbor Darlene Grass was murdered. She was, she wasn't just my neighbor, she was a close, dear friend of my family's. We considered her a family member to us. I moved into Inglewood in nineteen ninety-eight, and we were blessed to have Darlene Grass as a neighbor. I want to thank the Inglewood Police Department for their quick response. They were at the scene within minutes. These officers put their lives on the line that night. I witnessed that. We all witnessed that. This man was heavily armed, and I truly believed they saved a lot of my neighbors and, and myself that night. Thanks to their quick response, they captured, or they arrested this man very quickly. He is awaiting trial. I would also like to thank our victim's advocate, Nancy Wing, Wingon? I'm not sure on that, hope I didn't butcher it. But the compassion she showed everyone that night, and the days and the weeks to follow, hasn't gone unnoticed by our neighborhood. Thank you again, Inglewood Police Department, for risking your lives to protect our community. God bless you all, and thank you, guys, for letting me speak tonight.
Ms. McCloskey, thank you very much for your words tonight. Any comments from council, or any questions from council? Seeing now, Ms. McCloskey. I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Can you describe the types of services that you or your neighbors received from the Victims Advocate Department?
Victims Advocate Department, well, first of all, she was there all night, consoling everyone that was affected by the murder. She followed up with, uh, giving us her business card, telling us anybody that needed any type of counseling, and which my neighbor's daughter was the only person, child that she had, but she gave her business card out to all of us and told us if any of us needed any kind of counseling from the traumatic experience that we had, that, um, just to get ahold of her. She called her Darlene's daughter, she followed up with me and several residents, and asked how we were doing. This was like weeks afterwards, and just followed up with us to just see how we were doing, so we were just thankful that we were able to, and gave us the resources and said if anybody needed any type of counseling, that that was available to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Russell.
I, I just would like to make a comment. I just thank you for coming forward. I know that it was really difficult, and, um, I just thank you for the positive remarks about the Police Department and the Victims Advocate, uh, Associate. So, thank you, and, uh, you and the neighbors are all going to be in our prayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. McCloskey, thank you very much for your words tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is PJ Kolnick, here to address counsel regarding Code Next. And actually, just a comment, Member Anderson will be giving a response to public comment tonight. Mr. Kolnick?
Good evening. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets. Okay. Uh, I'm PJ. My cross streets, PJ Kolnick. My cross streets are, um, Ogden and Amherst. So, uh, yeah, I'm with Inglewood CAN. We are the Citizens for Affordable Neighborhoods. The F doesn't count. Inglewood CAN is a, a group that, uh, we started back in, uh, February, and we've actually been growing a lot. There's a lot of people that have been really interested in, uh, the idea. There's a lot of people that have been really interested in the ideas that we've been putting together. We've really been able to draw from a lot of different people across Inglewood to kind of get their opinions. And so, we put together some ideas, just some things that we'd like the council to consider as they're going through the Code Next process. You know, the real motivators for just us doing this is, and even personally, having moved to Inglewood originally from Montana, and being, you know, new and young in my career. Home prices are really high, rent's really high. I've been a renter, and I'm now a homeowner in Inglewood. So, I've experienced both. And, you know, even when I was renting, you know, it was, it was really helpful to be able to find a way to, you know, pool up my resources with other roommates and, you know, find affordable options. So, as someone that was young and new in my career, I was just looking for the most affordable way to just get started with life. And I think there's a lot of people that are like me, and whether they're my age or they look like me, I still think there's a lot of people out there that are just trying to find affordable ways to live in Inglewood, because it's a great community. So, we're just trying to figure out ways and strategies that people can access this community and this town in, in open ways. So, we just had some suggestions that we just wanted the council to consider as they're going through the Code Next process and the Code Next team. I'll just name them real quick, but the first ones, we're just, we're really hoping that the council can really consider expanding the middle housing options. So, we talked a little bit about it, duplexes and triplexes in more areas than they are currently. Even, even going so far as to allow them in maybe some of those R1 districts, where there's just more flexibility, and some of that kind of growth and development can happen a little bit more organically across the whole of Inglewood. And just let it be more incremental change. Maybe even considering all corner lots be duplex or triplex. And even just ways to do it, maybe even triplexes or even quadplexes near commercial areas. So, really just thinking creatively, how do we make things more dense? How do we make more people be able to live in some of these areas? The other one, and kind of closely tied to these middle housing options, is fixing the ADU ordinance. We had been able to talk briefly just about something like what we call them, and what a few people in the ADU kind of sphere call the poison pills of just keeping ADUs from being developed. Now, I know they're, they are legal here in Inglewood, but there's just a few ways that the council can consider, and then Code Next can consider, just making them more prevalent. And that would just be getting rid of the owner occupancy to build them. No, you know, getting rid of the off-street parking requirement, so that you don't have to have parking on the lot. Allowing for more structural forms, not just, maybe, maybe you could do it in your basement. Maybe you could do it attached to your home as a renovation. You wouldn't have to have it just as a detached structure. And just increasing the size limit. My wife and I's first apartment was a 600-square-foot place. It was really tight. We'd recommend just increasing it a bit, so that we could have maybe even grown and stayed in that place longer. So, maybe even going up to as high as 1,200. So, I'll finish up here really quick. We also just recommend changing the occupancy requirement. Right now, Inglewood is just two adults and their children. But just allowing for more ways that unrelated people can live together, pool their resources, have access to the same housing that some of us get to use. And we talked a little bit about it, expanding that mixed use and the buy-right multifamily, just allowing for a little bit more flexibility, and even more places that can kind of go past the PUD process. So, just that buy-right, that mixed-use zoning. So, those are just some suggestions, and they're just ways that we're hoping Inglewood can just kind of embrace a really market-driven concept and make this place affordable, so.
Mr. Kolnick, thank you very much for your comments tonight. Any questions from council? Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you for being here tonight, and I'm glad that you're enjoying your experience in Inglewood. My question is, can you tell us more about Inglewood CAN? This is the first time I'm hearing about this citizen group. Can you tell us more about the founding, the membership, what you, what you do, and how people can learn about you?
Yeah. So, Inglewood CAN, we started actually back in, I think it was February, was it February or March, when we found out the kind of the Code Next thing was going to be going on? And so, started just two of us, my, my neighbor Stephen and I. And then, we were able to just reach out to the networks within Inglewood, and it's just kind of grown organically since then. We don't really have a official website or anything, but yeah, we're just a, you know, kind of grassroots neighborhoods that are word of mouth saying, "Yeah, this is important to me, too." So, it's young people, old people, like everyone, so.
That's great. I appreciate you investing your time and your talent into the quality of life in Inglewood.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kolnick, I just have one question. You talked about upzoning certain areas. You're not talking about doing upzoning across all of Inglewood, but just spot zoning, I guess, in a sense, because you did mention corner lots. Is that basically, are you? I guess I'm just wondering, like, how, how much zoning or upzoning would you be considering within the city of Inglewood?
You know, I mean, I think, I think more is better, in the sense that if we're looking at opportunities to build duplexes and triplexes, and especially from a market-driven perspective, let's kind of let the market decide where in Inglewood is going to be where people want to live and, and drive that process. So, I wouldn't say we have to... I, I would say, give it as much flexibility as you can. So, yeah, if it's corner lots, let it be any corner lot in Inglewood. If it's, you know, places especially that have alleys, those will naturally develop duplexes and triplexes better than some areas. So, I, I would just say more is better.
Thank you, Mr. Kolnick. Anyone else from council? Seeing now, Mr. Kolnick, thank you for your time tonight.
Yep, thank you.
That now concludes scheduled public comment. We're moving on to unscheduled public comments. Same rules apply. You're limited to three minutes. First speaker up is Nathan Hoag, here to speak about the Inglewood Christmas Store. Going to have to restart that timer for you. Mr. Hoag, if you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Yes, happily. My name is Nathan Hoag. I live at 3198 South Bannock Street. Thank you all for the opportunity to come to speak to you. Thank you for continuing to host public comments. It's really important that we get a chance to tell you about what's going on in the community. I want to begin by just saying thank you across the board for all the work that you do. I know that your positions and jobs are oftentimes thankless, and especially in a public comment scenario. Sometimes, not tonight, but sometimes can be, can be rather challenging and, and I'm sure discouraging. So, I want to encourage you all and say thank you for all the work that you do. It means a ton to the community, and I know that oftentimes it goes unnoticed. So, I want to say thanks for that. Mainly what I'm here to tell you about is the Inglewood Christmas Store, which is in its 10th year. It started as the Bishop Christmas Store 10 years ago, and it was started by a church, not the one that I lead, a different one, outside of the community that was coming in to help kids at Bishop Elementary School get jackets and gifts and things like that that they needed for Christmas. It's expanded since then. We've now included several other schools throughout the Inglewood area, Bishop, Clayton, Maddox, Finest, and any of the students who work with the McKinney-Vento Family Resource Center here in Inglewood. We're going to serve 250 families this year, and if you're familiar with our church, you know that it's pretty small, and it takes the entire community to pull this off. So, essentially, what we do is we collect gifts that are valued at $25 apiece. We transform Bishop Elementary School into like a winter wonderland. Families who sign up in advance can come and shop for those gifts and buy two gifts per child that they register for. They buy those gifts that are valued at $25 apiece for $5 apiece, and they're able to wrap the gifts there. There's free childcare while they're shopping. There's food while they're there for them and their kids. There's a free outerwear store, so they can, for free, without making any purchase at all, grab jackets and pants and all kinds of different items of outerwear. And then, we give them a bag of groceries on their way out. So, you can find out more information at englewoodchristmestore.com. That's where you can find out where to donate gifts. You can register to volunteer. You can find out any information there. And I do have these cards with a QR code on the back. I don't know if I'm allowed to, like, distribute material or anything, but I do have them, so I can give them to you. Okay, great. Perfect. That's all.
Mr. Hoag, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions from council? Member Noonan Camp.
Mr. Hoag, thank you for being here tonight. I know several, actually, of Inglewood's staff participate in the Christmas Store every year, which I love. Can you share with us this year what you think the most critical need in Inglewood is for the store and anything else that you're experiencing?
Yes, thank you. Right now, the, the main thing that we need is to collect gifts. So, the donation of gifts is the thing that we need primarily for the store. Although we do need more volunteers, and we do need some more funding to pull off the store, the thing that we're lacking the most right now are those gifts valued at $25 apiece. That's the main thing right now. Yeah.
Anything else? Member Woodward.
I think my question is on those gifts. Is that mainly clothes you're looking for, or toys for elementary school kids?
It's, it's for any, any child zero to 18. So, parents who register through their school can shop for any of their kids regardless of their kid's ages. And ideally, yeah, some clothes would be fine, but we're, we, we love to collect toys and that kind of thing for the kids to, to enjoy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else from council? Mr. Hoag, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Dan Jacobson, here to talk about nonconforming. Good evening, Mr. Jacobson.
Good evening.
If you could just state your name, address, or cross street.
My name is Dan, Dan Jacobson. I own the two-family home at 656 and 660 East Yale in Inglewood. Really, I'm not sure that I need to repeat everything that's being said, and I've written to several of you about my personal issue with a duplex that's 1,048 feet on a 9,148-square-foot lot. The setbacks are, are huge, 18 feet on each, on the east-west sides apiece, and 62 feet to the rear. We just, and so, in hearing the last speaker talk, he lived in a 600-square-foot apartment or home. These are less. This is 525 square feet apiece. We just want the ability to, if, if it's torn down, just build another duplex, which is what it's always been. We're not asking to build a fourplex or an eightplex or whatever. It, it would be infinitely more family-friendly, easier to work. Currently, out of 2,137 R1A lots in Inglewood, there are six two-to-three-unit parcels or structures. In R1B, there's one two-to-three. If my building was built in 1935, it's, it's a piece of work, but it's rented all the time. I, I do anything I want for those tenants, and I keep them a long time. This is a way to enhance affordability, to, to let people live in Inglewood at a somewhat more affordable price, rather than putting up a structure that I've got a picture of here, which would be legal, which is over 3,000 feet and valued at, the last time I checked, about $1.4 million. That's at 2799 South, South Washington. If it's, if there's any way to be able to restructure the building and others like mine, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Any comments from council? Member Russell?
Thank you. So, have you been working with the building department at all in the city?
When I've called down there, I've met with Eric Sampson a couple times. And when I spoke to someone in city planning, I, I asked point-blank, "Have you ever seen a request for a variance in a nonconforming structure? And, and to, to redo it, be granted?" And the answer was no. And I asked her how long she'd worked for the city, and it was, it was years. I had spoken to Brooke Bell a couple of times, very helpful. But it, it just, it, you know, it's just not a thing that, that's done to grant those variances. I, I can keep the same, keep it a single story, so the same height, keep the same setbacks. I know you were concerned about that previously in a previous comment. And, and it's a very well, well-founded one. But again, something like that, which would be legal for me to build, just seems so out of character with the neighborhood, as this one kind of is. So...
Well, thank you for that answer. I'm sure that there'll be a response to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anyone else from council? Seeing now, Mr. Jacobson, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Up next is Gary, and Gary, I'm not sure of your last name here, but you're here to speak about new apartments, I believe? Sorry, I couldn't, didn't want to take a chance on the last name. Go ahead.
It's Kozak, Gary Kozak, 1260 West Oxford Avenue. I'm probably one of the longest-standing residents in Inglewood. It was homesteaded in 1856. So, I've been here even before my plot of land was even part of Inglewood. I'm here to talk about, just briefly, I was involved with the city council because I was a city council member during the Santa Fe corridor development. And we fought very hard because Oxford was the only connector. And at that point in time, when they finally opened it, the highway department had granted a six, a 10-foot-high fence for our residents, because we were already meeting the noise barrier, the highest limitations to put up with the noise barrier. Now, that hasn't happened, because the highway department went away and the city council changed. I didn't push the issue, but now that we've got a new planned development, we've already put in two apartment houses. There's a third one being built right now. There's two more proposed to go even further south of that two buildings. And now, we've got the one to take up the Sam's Automotive Lot, that goes from one end to the other. I just want to present this real quick, because I know I'm going to come back again, is we need a new traffic study, because the old traffic study that they're using in their proposal was before these other two had opened up, and we have a third one just about ready to open with over 400 units. And this planned one is going to be several hundred more going in there. The streets will not take it. We need a traffic study. We need an air quality study, and we need an air, a noise quality study. And then, I already know that we're getting federal grants to do a new sewer transform station down there at Oxford in Wendemere. Actually, it's right on, because the sewer lines go right into Santa Fe Drive, and then the pump station is there. We've already spent, the city of Inglewood had to go in and do some repairs there, and I'm out of, almost out of time. So, it's something that the city council needs to look at. Yes, it's going to be going in front of P&amp;Z, and I will be there to the planning and zoning, to do some other presentations. But I'm asking you, as a city council member and as a former city council member, that those qualities, air quality, sound quality, and traffic really needs to be considered. The little islands out there, we get a person driving over them at least once a month. I lost the historic fence, because a gal drove through our fence in excess of 60 miles an hour. And to repair that fence, we won it in court, but she disappeared, and it's $68,000 to bring it back to historic standards. And we can't find her, so I've left the temporary fence up there until we can get something else resolved. That's my problem. I'll deal with that, as far as I hated to see a historic site destroyed like that. But we really have to look at and consider what I'm asking the city. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Kozak. Any questions from council? Seeing now, Mr. Kozak, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. God bless.
And that now concludes public comments. I'll give Member Anderson a second to compose his words, and you can be when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and speaking tonight, and...
And, um, I'll speak to, to some of you specifically. Ms. McCloskey-Kelly, thank you so much for coming out tonight, um, just to, to advocate for the police department. I'm so sorry for what you and your neighbors have gone through. I know it's, um, certainly a traumatic experience and a big loss for you. So, um, I just wish you the blessing and peace of God during this time and for all your neighbors as well. It's, it's difficult, so thank you again. Um, uh, to Ms. McGilly from Aurora South Metro Business Development Center, thank you so much for the ongoing partnership that you've had with the city, um, the Small Business Development Center. It's been a great partnership for Inglewood and, uh, and appreciate everything that you've been a part of to serve the economic development in the city and the continued partnership in the future, and always appreciate the updates. Um, uh, Mr. Koenig, thank you for coming out to share your ideas and, um, just exciting to see this Inglewood Can group, um, coming up with some great suggestions. I love all the ideas and absolutely want to see them incorporated into our Code Next project, um, especially with the missing middle housing and the ADUs. Um, it was a really, really great approach, just to take a market, market-based approach to affordable housing. Mr. Jacobson on the development side as well, you heard our, I think you were here for our discussion on nonconformy, nonconformities tonight as well. So hopefully you see us moving in a direction, I, I, you know, I, I think the current code is, is pretty antagonistic to what you want to do. I would love to see that changed, as I said, um, during that discussion tonight, and hope to come up with a way to, to see properties like yours have a lot more options for, um, for rebuilding and, and expanding on the same, on the same lot as well. I think that's really important to maintain those and allow them to be rebuilt when they need to as well. Uh, Mr. Haag, thanks for coming out and talking about the Inglewood Christmas Store. Um, it's been a great thing for Inglewood. Is he here over behind the pole or is he, oh, he took, okay. But, uh, um, it's been a, such a blessing to have that in Inglewood the last 10 years, and I'm glad to hear that it's continuing to grow to expand other schools. And I know that's going to be, um, going to be a tremendous blessing to our city as well. And, uh, then finally, Mr. Kozak, thank you for coming out to speak. I, I hesitate to speak too much to a development that's currently in the process, um, but it's something that we will, um, will certainly be coming before council and we'll be taking those things into consideration, so. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Anyone else from council? And with that, that concludes public comments. Uh, we're now moving on to agenda item nine, but do we want to take a short break before we get to the rest of the agenda? Let's take a 10-minute break and, uh, reconvene right around 8:03. All right, members of council, we are back. Yay. Anybody hear that? No?
What's that? He, he needs his mic on. Oh.
No. Uh, now it is. We're good. All right, everyone, we are back. We're now moving on to agenda item nine, consent agenda items. I didn't see anything being pulled tonight. Anyone? Nope. All right. Um, with that, can I get a motion to approve 9A1, 9A2, 9B 1 through 3, and 9C 1?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Uh, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. No public hearing tonight. We're moving on to 11A1, uh, Council Bill 39, amending Inglewood Municipal Code Regarding Animal Empowerment. We have Assistant City Attorney, uh, Vicky McDermott.
Actually, can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I talked to the city attorney in the meeting last week with Sean, and she had scheduled it, or it got put on the schedule for the 21st because she wanted to be here, and I brought up the fact that it had been tabled to a date certain. And so I asked if we could table it again till the 21st.
Thank you, Member Russell. Do you want to make that motion? I guess.
Well, why don't you ask, um...
Go ahead, uh, Ms. McDermott.
Um, yes, would you like to make a motion to table this to November 21st?
I, I would.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we table, um, uh, Council Bill 39 to, uh, November 21st.
Thank you, Member Russell. Can I get a second? Second. Thank you, Member Anderson. Any comments from council? Member Noonan Camp?
So, just so I could have clarity, is this a request, uh, from the city attorney that we need to table this? Because I know we have members of code enforcement here. I'd like to do it tonight if we can. Can you help me understand why we would need to?
Um, actually, it was on the agenda for the 21st because the city attorney wanted to be here. And I said, we tabled it to a date certain, which was tonight. And I said, so if we put it back on, she said, do you want it on tonight? I said, if we could table it again. And she said, yes, you can table it again.
That's helpful, thank you. But do we need to table it? Do we have the information we need to go ahead and address it tonight? Is there a reason why we would need to wait for the city attorney?
Um, I, I think there are some reasons that we need to wait for the city attorney because she's familiar with all of it and has been working on it. I mean, you all can do what you want to do. You can vote however you want to do that. It's fine.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anything else from council? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member, Mayor Proton Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, five ayes, one nay, the one nay being Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you. Moving on to 11A2, Council Bill 67, amending Inglewood Municipal Code to Increase the Waste Transfer Surcharge from 50 cents per cubic yard to 63 cents. We have Finance Director Jackie Low here on this item. Hello, Director Low?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, council. Uh, staff is asking council to approve a bill for, uh, ordinance to increase the waste transfer surcharge from 50 cents per cubic yard to 63 cents per cubic yard effective January 1st, 2023. We list a previous council, um, action. In 1987, the waste transfer surcharge was established at 20 cents per cubic yard. In 2012, the waste transfer surcharge was revised from 20 cents per cubic yard to 50 cents, which is 150% increase. So for 2023, we're planning to increase the surcharge from 50 cents per cubic yard to 63 cents, which is 26% increase. We did a analysis based on the CPI published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics for the past 10 years. So the average increase in the past 10 years, uh, the CPI adjustment is probably 2.8%. Over the 10-years period is probably 30.9%. So after considering the CPI and our historical trend, we decided to increase the percentage by 26% from 2020, 2012 to 2023. So if council has any questions about our justification and our calculations?
Thank you, Director Low. Uh, Member Woodward, start us off.
Yeah, mine is, it started in January of 2012, and now we're looking at starting it in January of 2023. So that's 11 years, not 10 years. And in just doing the numbers and doing a simple future value out of that, it would bring it to 65 cents, which doesn't seem like much, except it's 33, $33,000, $33,000 per year additional.
Yeah. If we increase the, um, percentage by 26%, bring the rate from 50 cents to 63 cents, we'll get additional $217,000. Then down under 4-7-3, it's still talking about an individual person, not the trash company. What are they charging the trash company for dumping trucks at the transfer station?
I need to verify if the per cubic is based on individual trash or the truck. My thinking is trucks, but I need to verify.
I really would like that verified before we vote on this, because if we're increasing the fee to individual people that use the transfer station, but not the trash trucks, then I think we're missing out on a lot of revenue that we could have from that.
Mayor, I can address that.
Go ahead, City Manager Lewis.
Thank you for the question, Member Russell. This absolutely pertains to trash haulers that are using the waste management facility. So it could be waste management trucks, it could be other trucks. But the vast majority of the revenue that we see from this is from trash haulers that are using the landfill located in Inglewood. And Director Lowe is correct, these are pretty limited stations throughout the state. And in looking at some of the... We can get a comparison if you'd like, but we are pretty low. And you know, even... We looked at the rate that was charged back in 2012, and adjusted for inflation, and 63 cents, 65 cents isn't keeping up with inflation compared to what it was when that fee was adopted in 2012. So we're confident that, you know, we're, if anything, below market on this. But the revenue from this fee does come from the trash haulers.
Okay, but can we make reference to that in the bill?
I think we can definitely amend that, amend the "whereas's." I think it was assumed and implied, because that is the source of the fee.
Well, and I thought it was implied too, but it's... I do not see it anywhere in the ordinance.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anything else?
So what has Waste Management been notified of this increase in the surcharge?
Yes.
When were they notified?
We notified them probably two months ago. We had a conversation with them.
Okay. The reason I asked when Waste Management was notified of this is that it was after that then that Waste Management started sending out notification to the citizens that they were no longer going to do alley pickup. I just wonder if there's a correlation with that. And that probably should be a council request.
I can answer that, Mayor, on the spot, if you'd like. It was definitely before residents, including myself, received that notification.
Okay. I appreciate that. So, okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and then Member Anderson.
Just a question for the city attorney's office regarding the use of the term "person." Isn't that kind of a quirk of law, often that "person" is just used to generally describe any entity, whether it be a corporation or, you know, business or what have you?
Sometimes, yes, but in this instance, the code under Section 4-7-2 does define "person" in this context, and it's defined as any individual, firm, co-partnership, joint venture, corporation, society, club, association, joint stock company, estate or trust, receiver, trustee, assignee, leesee, or any person acting in a fiduciary or representative capacity, whether appointed by court or otherwise, or any other group or combination acting as a unit, including the United States of America, State of Colorado, and any political subdivision thereof, in the plural, as well as the singular number. So in this instance, it would include an individual.
Okay, because we've already captured that in the definitions of the existing code, the presence of the term "person" in the "whereas" clause doesn't necessarily have the effect that Member Russell is indicating. It doesn't cause the confusion that she's indicating is present here?
Because we do have a definition within the code section that we're seeking to amend for "person," we would rely on that as opposed to the "whereas" clause.
Okay, thank you.
Member Anderson?
That actually answered my question as well.
So...
Member Russell, go ahead.
Thank you. If that is in the definition, is that in the paperwork that we got today?
I don't believe so, no, because that section of the code isn't being amended. It's Section 473, which immediately follows.
Okay. I don't have an issue if that applies to this, but I just wanted to make sure. Because the bottom line is, yes, I do believe individuals that are using the transfer station, citizens, should have to pay the... They're not going to be paying the tonnage that waste trucks are. So, all right. That satisfies me, I think. So is this a... Is this a resolution or a... This is an ordinance, correct?
It's an ordinance.
This first reading?
Yes.
So can we get that added information on second reading, please? Thank you.
The second information is for...
The definition.
Definition.
Definition of "person."
Any other questions from council?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
My question slash concern about this is the question of whether or not the fee that we are establishing accomplishes the task that we are setting out to accomplish. So the fee that we're establishing is 63 cents per cubic yard. And I don't know if you've driven Union recently, but I have. And I would not describe it as a pleasant experience. And we talked about that in our capital planning, you know, this most recent cycle. And so ideally, we are able to pave Union at a level of quality that allows for it to accept the trash truck traffic that it receives without getting beaten up and, you know, driven down into the condition that it's in now. And not just Union, but the rest of our streets as well. So I guess that gets to the crux of my question, which is, this 13 cents increase, giving us an extra roughly quarter million dollars a year in revenue, does that adequately address the place that we're at today from the last 10, 20, 30 years of waste moving to and from the Union transfer station?
Without studying the impact, we cannot answer that question. But what do we have from the financial aspect, if it's just based on the CPI from the baseline? We definitely could do more analysis. But I also want to bring to council, we pull out the waste transfer charge we have received this year, because there's a fire on the waste station, transfer station in June. We just want to see if there's a reduction of the revenue. In fact, we did not see a major reduction. We saw a little bit decrease, probably $20,000 in the month of August. So this is another additional information for council to consider. With the current their operation, what would be the charge in addition to considering the impact?
Thank you, Director Lowe. City Manager Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the line of question that Mayor Protem Ward has is a really good starting point for a discussion of where should our fees be directed to. And certainly, council has the... It is your prerogative, if you would like to direct revenue from a fee into a specific purpose or fund. We can do that. You know, I think the correlation is there. Member Russell, you know, read that in the "whereas's," that we definitely tie this fee to the need to maintain our streets and alleys. And so I think if that's the prerogative of council, we can do that. If I could also address that, the average trash truck holds about 30,000 pounds. That's 28 cubic yards when compacted. So if every homeowner is depositing 50 pounds of trash, which I think would be quite a lot, in their 96-gallon container, that's 3 cents per container when it's used. So I think, you know, I would find it hard to believe there would be a correlation between a very minimal increase in this fee in any fees that will be assessed as customers, or, you know, that they would discontinue some additional service.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Any other questions from council? Member Woodward, go ahead.
Couldn't we easily go back and check our records and see what the cubic yardage was back in 2011? And compare? Because I know from what we heard when we were doing... Looking at the trash hauling for the city, was a gentleman came up here from, I believe, Republic and said, "Yes, we utilize the waste transfer station, and all the other companies do also." And they're picking up not just Inglewood, but all over the place. So 2011, we could just back into it by using that 50 cents and know, get a good idea of how many cubic yards are then, and then what it is now by what we're receiving based on the lower number.
So you want to see the increase from 2011 to 2022, the increase in cubic yards?
Correct.
Okay. Then determine the rate we're going to set.
Correct. Because if it... I'm guessing that it was a whole lot less then, because there isn't the density that there is now.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Anything else?
That's it.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, to Member Woodward's point, if the data is available, I'd actually consider seeing it all the way back to the 1980s. Because I think that's one of the issues I'm having trouble wrapping my head around right now, is there's been a significant increase in density, and the traffic trucks that are occupying our roads now, or the trash trucks, rather, that are occupying our roads now are different in a significant way from the ones that existed in the 80s. You know, 33,000 pounds of trash is a lot different than, you know, half that. And does that have a disparate impact on the roads, which is what this is intended to provide for? And if it does, the fee should be similarly altered to account for that. So on the long term... In the short term, I don't have much of an issue approving this, but in the long term, I would like to see some more data on that, going back to the 80s, to see if we can see if we're accomplishing what we think we're accomplishing.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anyone else? Seeing none. Oh, Member Anderson, you got anything else now? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve 11A2?
Salute.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any comments? Member Woodward?
Yeah, I would like to increase that from 63 cents to 65 cents cubic yard.
So you'd like to make a motion to amend?
Make a motion to amend, thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any comments? Member Anderson?
I'm not... I haven't seen the data to justify that. I don't think the CPI really captures all the complexity of the question here, but nevertheless, I kind of want to stick with 63 personally, so I'm not supportive of this amendment. This produces about, I think, if I did my calculations right, the total fee is over a million dollars a year, which is a substantial amount of money for road maintenance, since we're looking at spending 3 million a year overall. You know, if a third of that is theoretically coming from this, then I feel like they're paying their fair share at 63 cents.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Anyone else?
I'll voice in. I also will be a no. You know, I'm not opposed to raising this rate in the future, but as of right now, I'd like to see a little bit more data before I move forward with the 65, so... Mayor Protem?
I find Member Woodward's logic compelling. We've based the calculation to 63 cents on a 10-year calculation, but we're in year 11. So what is the difference there?
Member Anderson?
If you run the CPI calculations starting back in whatever the first year it was, it comes up to like 52 cents. So I don't, you know, you can run the numbers a number of different ways, but I don't, you know... I think that 65 is... Or 63 is in line with where it should be based on the original, if we're running it from the original date.
Member Russell?
I think for right now, I'd like to stay right where we are, because I think there's other ramifications that may be tied together. It'll all come back to the citizens, and so I think we should be a little bit careful right now. So I'll vote no on the amendment.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Protem?
I just want to make sure before I make a decision on this proposed amendment, that I understand the math. Member Anderson, can you elaborate a little bit more on how Member Woodward's calculation doesn't correlate to what he says it does?
I think Member Woodward's does, if you're just looking at 2012 and 2022. But if you run it from a CPI, you know, I just pulled up CPI Inflation Calculator and ran it from 20 cents in 1987, it came up to 52 cents for 2022. So, you know, it's a different approach to get to a different number, and one of them comes up lower than 63, and one of them comes, you know, just comes up higher, so, you know.
See none. Oh, Ma- Member Anderson, you got anything else now? See none, can I get a motion to approve eleven A two?
Salute.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any comments? Member Woodward?
Yeah, I would like to increase that from sixty-three cents to sixty-five cents cubic yard.
So you'd like to make a motion to amend?
Make a motion to amend, thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Any comments? Member Anderson?
I'm not, um, I I haven't seen the data to justify that. I don't think the the CPI really captures all the complexity of the question here, but nevertheless, I kind of want to stick with sixty-three personally, so I'm I'm not supportive of this amendment. This produces about, I think if I did my calculations right, the total fee is over a million dollars a year, which that's that's a substantial amount amount of money for, um, for road maintenance, since we're looking at spending three million a year overall, you know, if a third of that i- is theoretically coming from this, then I feel like they're they're paying their fair share, um, at sixty-three cents.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Anyone else?
Uh, I'll I'll voice in, I also will be a no. You know, I'm not opposed to raising this rate in the future, but as of right now, I'd like to see a little bit more data before I move forward with the sixty-five, so. Uh, Mayor Protim?
I find Member Woodward's logic compelling. Uh, we've based the calculation to sixty-three cents on a ten-year calculation, but we're in year eleven. So what is the difference there?
Uh, Member Anderson?
If you run this the s- the CPI calculations starting back in whatever the first year it was, it comes up to like fifty-two cents. So I don't, you know, you can run the numbers a number of different ways, but, um, I don't, you know, I think that sixty-five is, or sixty-three is in line with where it should be based on the original, if we're running it from the original date.
Member Russell?
Um, I I think for right now, um, I I'd like to stay right where we are because I think there's other ramifications that may be tied together. It'll all come back to the citizens. And so I think we should be a little bit careful right now. So I'll vote no on the amendment.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Protim?
I just want to make sure before I I make a decision on this proposed amendment, that I understand the math. Member Anderson, can you can you elaborate a little bit more on on how Member Woodward's calculation doesn't correlate to what he says it does?
I think, uh, I think Member Woodward's, um, does if you're just looking at two thousand twelve and twenty twenty-two. But if you run it from N- a CPI, you know, I just pulled up CPI inflation calculator and ran it from twenty cents in nineteen eighty-seven. It came up to fifty-two cents for twenty twenty-two. Um, so, you know, it's a different approach to get to a different number, and one of them comes up lower than sixty-three. And one of them comes, you know, this comes up higher, so, you know.
Okay, so for you, it's a compromise of sorts.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, that's helpful.
Member Woodward?
Well, I'm looking at what it says here, two point eight percent per year. So if you take two point eight percent and then add two point eight percent to every single one year to get the future value of that, you're going to come up to, I believe, sixty-five cents on eleven years. So that's that's the way I got there.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Anyone else? See none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Nay.
Member Noonan Camp?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protim Ward?
Nay.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Nay.
With the record show, five nays, five nays, one yes. It does, it's defeated.
Thank you. Uh, now we're going back to the original motion. Um, any comments? See none, can we please? Sorry, go ahead, Mayor Protim.
A little slow on the uptake tonight. Uh, I I think this is a good start. Um, that's how I'll put it. Uh, I would like to see this topic overall come forward for a study session where we can really dig in deep on whether or not this fee serves the needs of the city. And if there are unintended consequences that come with raising the fee, as Member Russell alluded to somewhat, uh, recently. Uh, but I I'm comfortable with this tonight as a as what I would call a good start.
Anyone else? Member Russell?
Thank you. Um, and and I will support this tonight and, um, I'm just, um, and I've already been told there'll be more verbiage in the next, um, next time. So, thank you.
All right, see no one else? Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
With the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to eleven C-
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Director Lowe, sorry. Moving on to eleven C three, Council Bill, or sorry, eleven A three, Council Bill sixty-nine. Uh, amending the Inglewood Municipal Code, uh, establishing standard provisions for city contracts. We have Assistant City Attorney McDermott here to discuss the changes.
Yes, hi, thank you so much, Mayor Sierra, Mayor Protim Ward, and council members. Um, so I'm here to address Council Bill sixty-nine. So what this would do, um, it would amend Inglewood Municipal Code, section four dash one dash three dash four, to establish a municipal contracting process. Um, essentially, the city attorney's office independently negotiates each contract to which the city is a party. And certain provisions require, uh, vendor education and some extended negotiation, such as compliance with the taxpayer bill of rights, which would, is something that we need to do when we have multi-year contracts or where there's a potential for an option to renew, so that we're complying with, uh, taper, allowing for termination in the event of non-appropriation of funds, uh, in the next fiscal year of that contract lifecycle. Also, um, the the city indemnification, a lot of vendors, uh, insist on indemnification provisions where the city is essentially obligated to third parties, uh, which is something that we push back against, um, and argue that it's not, um, allowed for under Colorado law. Um, that's something that requires a lot of, uh, e- education. Um, and also certain choice of law provisions and venue provisions that are outside of Colorado. So what this, um, ordinance would do, it it would establish, uh, the certain of these contract provisions to be part of municipal code and also to prohibit certain other, uh, provisions of from being, um, within our our contracts. So for the required provisions, I I mentioned a number of them already, uh, compliance with the taxpayer bill of rights for, um, allowing for termination in the event of non-appropriation, uh, clauses in our contracts that make clear that the city's tax exempt from certain property sales and use taxes, um, a a procedure regarding assignment of the contract, um, co- that the contract is binding on successors and interests. An independent contractor provision, which defines the relationship between the parties, between the city and the vendor or contractor, making clear that they're not an employee, um, that, uh, also, um, third-party beneficiaries, that any contractual agreement would not be enforceable on, uh, any third parties. That additionally, that or should, if the contract is in response to a city solicitation, the vendor or contractor's response to that solicitation would be incorporated by reference into the terms of the city contract. Um, also, uh, that any modification of the contracts would require a a writing. Uh, additionally, the provisions would require a choice of law provision, being Colorado, and also venue being in Arapahoe County. A section regarding compliances, making clear that the vendor or contractor would would be required to comply with state federal law. Uh, a force majeure provision that allows for termination in the event of events that are outside of the control of different parties of the contract, that the contractor or vendor cannot buy in the city. And then an indemnification provision that would require the contractor or vendor to indemnify the city to the fullest extent required by law. Um, additionally, this ordinance would have certain categories and clauses that would be prohibited, uh, within our city contracts, such as any attempt to reallocate risk that's contrary to the common law or statute, um, such as like limitations on on damages that could be recovered in the event of a breach. Um, also that any attempt to require the city to indemnify or or hold harmless another party would not, uh, would be void. Um, and then additionally, any attempt to require, uh, binding arbitration or or any kind of dispute resolution that's outside of a a court process would not be, um, would be struck as void. So overall, we believe that this would lead to a more efficient process in negotiating contracts. It would reduce, uh, city liability and exposure to certain kind of claims arising out of contractual agreements. It would also reduce the length of our contracts and terms and conditions by having us, uh, be able to reference the code and incorporating that by reference into our contracts. So with that, um, we would ask that you consider adopting this ordinance to amend Inglewood Municipal Code, section four dash one dash three dash four, uh, and I and help me answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott, for that overview. Uh, Member Russell?
Thank you. So currently, in the contracts that we have, are they standard contracts that we have now?
So the city does have standardized contracts, but oftentimes we, um, will be required to negotiate off of vendor contracts and their forms, which is where we get into this extended, um, back and forth. In our current standardized city contracts, we do include these provisions that we are seeking to include in municipal code.
Okay, so this would shorten the contracts. I mean, it's not just going to make it easier, um, for staff to negotiate, it's going to make it, uh...
It would, it would streamline our current documenting process.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Mayor Protim?
I I have a question in regards to section one, paragraph E. And I think the thing that I'm having trouble wrapping my head around is, you know, there's a certain, the the purpose of a contract is to come to agreement between parties on, you know, what's to be, what services to be provided for how much and when and et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, paragraph E, uh, specifies that any contract entered into, uh, by or on behalf of the city that conflicts with any provisions of the ordinance, uh, the ordinance prevails. And this seems to take away some of the flexibility, or even all of the flexibility of the contracting process, where we could have a vendor approach us and say, we have this product that we know you want, but this provision of the city code, which is required for all of your contracts, is not okay with us. And we don't have a way, absent passing an ordinance, to change that particular provision of city code to deal with that vendor.
I I appreciate the question and thank you for it. Um, I I left my copy of the ordinance at my desk, but, um, we also have a provision in there that specifies that if we have specifically uh, in- included this in response to a solicitation, or if otherwise, thank you very much, uh, City Manager Lewis, or if otherwise, um, specifically agreed to go against, uh, or or modify the con- the, um, our requirements by agreement, that we would, um, be able to 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 do so. So I'm sorry, I'm just going to E. Yeah, as as drafted on earlier section of, um, of the ordinance, was intended to make clear that if we were, yes, if we put this in the solicitation, that we would be agreeing to to terms outside of the of the ordinance. Does that help answer your question? I'm I'm trying to find it as well. I I just, I know it's in there, I just have to go to find it.
I see C twelve responses to solicitation?
Well, that was to incorporate them by reference. Um, oh, yes, I'm sorry, um, section D, unless we've specifically waived or amended by a written agreement with reference to the subsection below, or if we've included it in a city solicitation, um, then these prohibited, these other, um, one through eight would be prohibited terms. So we can by contract specifically agree to a contractual provision that we are otherwise working to prohibit.
Any further comment on that, Mayor Protim? I know you're reading through the languages now, so.
Yeah, not being an attorney, being a a layman, it's it's difficult for me to challenge the attorney's interpretation of section D. It's just that s- the way section E reads, it reads so absolute. So maybe it's just by reference to section D. You know, it says, "The provision contained within this section shall prevail, and the conflicting provision in the contract shall be null and void and unenforceable as to the city." That's pretty strong language and pretty direct.
I I agree that that is strong language and is direct, but because are the the, should this, uh, pass, what what the code would then also say is that unless we've specifically waived or amended by a written agreement with reference to subsection. So there is like a procedure within the code itself to take us out of that subsection E language.
Okay, that that answers the question to sufficiently for me. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you for the question. I think it's very important to clarify that.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Anyone else? See none, can I get a motion to approve eleven A three?
I'll move eleven A three.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any comments? See none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
With the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to eleven C one, the fees and rate schedule, we have Director of Finance Jackie Lowe. Talking fees.
Good evening, Mayor, council again. I'm asking council to approve the comprehensive twenty twenty-three fee and rate schedule resolution. As we discussed earlier, the currently, there are two rates are required by o- approved by ordinance. One is storm water utility fee, the other is a waste transfer surcharge. So in your packet, you will see two attachments. Attachment one is comprehensive rate and fee schedule. And attachment two is just showing the adjustment. And also, I gave you a hard copy before the beginning of the meeting because we need to update the fees and rate for code enforcement. There are four different rates, um, that need to be included, updated in the attachment A and B. So also in your packet, you will see the total, um, the change, how the impact on the general fund and water fund and sewer fund. So we're asking you to, um, approve this comprehensive list by resolution. And all the directors who have the responsibility for budgeting revenues are present tonight. So we welcome your comments and questions.
Thank you, Director Lowe. Any questions from council? Uh, Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions about some specific fees. Is this a good time for me to ask this? One is under community development. I noticed that our short-term rental permit fee is increasing from three hundred to four hundred dollars. It's a pretty big increase. Um, can you just speak to why that increase is being suggested?
Yeah, do we have any representative from community development? We cannot speak to that, answer that question.
I can ask another one while we're waiting. Um, I, just one other question. Uh, this is small, but the Pirates Cove fees, I see that we're raising admission fees. And I think we also raised them last summer. Um, does this apply only to daily admission rates and for cit- residents and non-residents? Or does it also apply to annual, um, passes? Season passes?
Uh, Christine Underhill, Director of Parks, Recreation, Library, and Golf. And, uh, for Pirates Cove, it's admission fees that we are raising. So anything under admissions will go up slightly to help cover some of the raising costs for labor charges and overall maintenance of that. So, um, it looks like the current rate, we are, um, it varies between nine and seventeen dollars. So that would be our daily fees coming in, and we're only going up a dollar. So it's not a huge increase, and it's not for the passes, it's just for our daily rate.
And it will apply to residents and non-residents, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's helpful. And then just the other question, but that's all. Thank you, Christina.
Any other questions? Member Russell?
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. So this is on attachment B. I think it's probably on the first page. Um, the first one is code enforcement reinspection fee, and this is a new fee. So who is charged and what is that for, the reinspection fee?
Reinspection fees are intended for those properties that we have to visit multiple times to gain compliance. The first two inspections that are included in code would be at no charge, excuse me. But we are running into properties where we need to do, we had a case that we had to do eighteen inspections. And so this is also to help, um, offset the expenses of the code enforcement inspections when we're having to do multiple.
So when when you do eighteen inspections, doesn't that end up becoming a nuisance then?
Um, it's part of the court process. Um, as a c- case moves forward, we try, the court and us try to allow for voluntary compliance. But every time we go back out, uh, it it is normally deemed already a nuisance as part of that process.
Okay, I appreciate that, and and I can totally understand that if they don't clean it up right away, they should have to pay for that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, then I just, I have a couple more questions. So on, the next one is the golf course fees, the green fees. It says the current rate varies between three and forty-two dollars per round. Uh, then they, it says the fee increase is one to five dollars. And then the fees and rates effective January first of twenty twenty-three varies from three to forty-six dollars. Why didn't it go like from four to forty-seven dollars?
That's a great question. Um, it probably should, and we'll make that correction.
Okay.
I'll look into that. I don't, um, that may just be a entry error, but you would be correct in that statement.
Okay, thank you. And then I have another one. This is a, this is community development. Um, it's down on that same page. It's other fees, reinspection fee. And it says the current is fifty-five dollars per hour. The proposed increase is twenty-two dollars per hour. And then it says the fee and rate effective January first is seventy-five dollars per hour. I think it should be seventy-seven dollars per hour, or twenty dollars per hour is the projected increase. It's about the fourth one from the bottom.
You're looking at sk- attachment B?
Attachment B, on the first page, under community development.
Other fee?
Uh, other, yes, other fees. No, wait a second. Other fees, yes, reinspection fee, correct.
Increase by twenty-two dollars.
Right. Okay, I think that's all I have now.
Any other questions from council? Member, uh, sorry, City Manager Lewis, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and to Member Noonan Camp's question, um, I apologize. We do have a community development rep that is monitoring but recovering from COVID, so I'll answer for them. Um, we, uh- We, uh, have really seen at least a fifty percent increase in staff time taken on compliance. And certainly we have more Airbnbs or short-term rentals, I should say. But proportionately, we are spending much more time in twenty twenty-two have, um, than we did in twenty twenty-one ensuring compliance. I think there was a reliance on our vendor who does our, um, some of our processing of the program to do some of that compliance and that has proven to, uh, not be effective in obtaining compliance. So we can guarantee at least a fifty percent increase in staff time, um, from previous years. And, and so really probably this is still low, um, in terms of how much, uh, cost recovery we're actually doing with these permits.
Mayor Protam?
I'd like to go back to the code enforcement reinspection fee for a moment. So I'm trying to get my head around the process there. And I know it was described, but, uh, let's just assume for the sake of argument that I get my annual, uh, congratulations. You have weeds in the alley you never go into, notice on my door from code enforcement. And I, uh, is that inspection one or? So I have seven days to take care of those alley weeds. And then code enforcement comes back around and that's inspection two. But if I don't clear those weeds, then I get the posting notice, which says you get thirty days or you have to go to court? Isn't that our current process?
So we've actually streamlined the weed process, um, to be more compliant. So you'll get the friendly reminder of we're out giving you the notice. You have seven days. We go back out, uh, then you have fourteen days. So we're looking at about twenty-one days. Uh, if we go back out on the third inspection and you're not compliant, um, we're actually sending weed, uh, for abatement. So we've been abating weeds this summer.
Okay, so let's assume that it's a case that's not subject to abatement.
Yes.
Uh, administrative abatement. I don't know. Can you, can you provide me a quick example of something like that?
Let's go ahead and take like, um, a couch on someone's fr- front lawn.
Yeah, okay, that's a good example. Um, so inspection one is the, they drive by and they see it. They give me the friendly reminder, you can't have furniture on your front yard. Uh, then seven days, inspection two, and then fourteen days.
Fourteen days.
Posting notice. And that would be inspection three at that point?
So then you would go into inspection three. If inspection three, you're found to be in compliance, then there would be no fee. But we would have to move that forward for an additional inspection after that, um, to make sure that you're compliant. So we have to verify at that fourteen-day period whether or not you're compliant.
But you're going to issue a summons if I'm not?
So that will be part of the process and then we would be ordered by the judge to do follow-up. We have to be the eyes of the court as well, um, to monitor process as it moves forward.
Okay, and I guess that's sort of the crux of my question, right, is there's already going to be some penalty for non-compliance presumably in the municipal court. And now we're prescribing another presumed penalty that is, again, presumably at the discretion of the municipal judge, whether or not it gets charged because he does have authority to waive fines. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm having trouble wrapping my head around the actual purpose of the, is, is this supposed to be additional punishment?
No, it's, it's cost recovery for the staff time that is needed to go out and continue to do the reinspections. Uh, as, as part of this process and just to remind you, we're at ninety-seven percent compliance rate with that twenty-one day period. So we're looking at the properties that are the worst offenders. It's not just a couch. We're talking about loads of trash, outdoor storage, abandoned vehicles. So it's, it's really just an added measure as we follow the process through. Most of those significant nuisances, we don't abate, we're not able to do. So we're really trying to, to recover the cost that it, that a staff person would need to go out there, inspect, document. Um, and then we would have to go back out to make sure that there's re, that there is compliance at some point.
Okay, and this would be something then, as I understand it, because a lot of those people, money is one of the issues. It's not always, but it can be. This would just be something that we would add to the lien when we foreclose on the case in court, essentially?
It would go to collections, yes.
Okay. All right, I, I think I understand. Um, all right, that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions from Council? Member Noonan Camp?
Yes, I have one more. There are a few at the top of attachment B. Interestingly, that we're cutting fees, not raising fees, especially, uh, with liquor licensing. Can you speak to those changes, why we're reducing the fees?
What is the pers- specific line item you're referring?
It's the top three rows of the first page of attachment B.
Is that administration, the department?
Yes, yes.
I will have, there should not be any reduce, reduction of fees. Oh, city manager, is it the manager change fee? That was seventy-five dollars, now it's thirty? And that's, which fee are you speaking of?
I'm looking at new liquor license, current rate fifteen hundred dollars, new rate one thousand?
Yeah, um, the liquor fees are established by state and every year, because they have to balance their budget, they go, they fluctuate.
So those are states that not?
Right now, that's what the fee is. It could go up January first, but we won't know yet.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? See, now can I get a motion to approve eleven C one?
I move to approve eleven C one.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Any further comments? See, now can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you, Director Lowe, on the, uh, discussions tonight. Moving on to mayor's choice, we do have an executive session tonight for personal matters under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two four F one regarding review of the city manager and city attorney salaries. Uh, let me get my paperwork here. So I move to go into executive sessions tonight for personal matters under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two four F one regarding review of the city manager and city attorney salaries. Present at the executive session are the following persons. Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Protam, Stephen Ward, council members Rita Russell, Joe Anderson, Chelsea Noonan Camp and Jim Woodward, as well as Director of Human Resources, Sean Weisskey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you, everyone. We would now exit this meeting and reconvene in the Pike's Peak Room on the third floor.
Ohio.
Oh, I didn't. I told him I didn't care.
Well, I think.
I should. It all must be. I think. He says. She had.
I guess she. That's probably not.
I don't hear. Yeah. Uh-huh.
You're there.
Very well. This is.
You turn.
There's no. Yeah. To be noticeable.
I'll make sure that it's.
He must have because. Maybe it has. Oh.
It was.
Lots of. I'm assuming. We didn't.
I thought.
In breaks on. In the hour. Swim. This is. But.
I miss my way.
More.
Oh, yeah.
Um. I don't. I think. That's awesome. I'm. Does your doctor come on here? Is very. Oh, we just. You're.
I don't. Have you.
You. Oh, this girl. Okay, he said. The roots. That's why. Jack. Jack. Jack.
All right. All right, we're back everyone. The time is now ten twenty-one and the executive session has been concluded. Present at the executive sessions were the following persons: Mayor Ethane Osierra, Mayor Pro Tem Stephen Ward, Councilmember Rita Russell, Joe Anderson, Chelsea Noonencamp, and Jim Woodward, and Director of Human Resources Sean Wiskey. I am moved to close the executive session. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tem. Can we please vote?
Mayor Anders-- or, my goodness. Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonencamp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Were you a mayor?
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter is not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. All right, everyone. For mayor's choice, I don't have anything else for tonight, so opening up to council members' choice. Mayor Pro Tem?
Just one item. I wanted to mention the holiday market that took place at Malle on Saturday. I went this year, first time ever. That thing is huge. And it's really awesome. So, congratulations to our city events team for pulling off yet another good one and finding a place for me to spend my weekly or bi-weekly council salary.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tem. Anyone else? C nine, City Manager support.
Thank you Mayor. Just a reminder that the city offices will be closed for Veterans Day on Friday. Also, I'll be going back to Texas on Thursday. And Acting City Manager will be Tim Dodd and I'll be returning Sunday night. So, hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable Veterans Day.
Thank you City Manager Lewis. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned. Everyone, see you guys next week.